Okay, Madam Chair, this is Julianne. So we're going to get started in just a minute. When you see the graphics change, then you can call the meeting to order. Okay, Madam Chair, you can begin. I'm sorry, you're on mute.
Okay, great. I still don't see any graphics change, but I can still start and you'll just have to help us out, Julianne. Great, hello, good afternoon. We call, I call this August 16th, 2022 Hybrid Zoning Meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commissioners to Order. I, along with Commissioner Piscotti, oh, I along with Commissioner Kissada, and I believe Commissioner Piscotti will be joining remotely, will be participating remotely. We will have a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by myself. A moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge of allegiance
Allegiance to the flag.
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again for everyone who's joining. Deputy County Manager Enrico Grati, are there any changes to the agenda?
Good. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. There are no changes to the agenda today. Planning staff, I believe, is ready to proceed, as is the applicant.
Thank you. We will now proceed with public hearing items and hearing procedures. We, I believe, we need to swear in all those presenting today.
Thank you. Please keep in mind that this applies for those testifying in person and remotely as well. Please, please answer the question. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury? All those testifying today, please affirm.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Whatever, you know, in terms of swearing in, we just have to make sure that we're pretty clear on that. I think that's, people either raising their hand or right, is that the best way to do it? Because we need to have a record, right? Does that mean that if people come up, shouldn't they just swear in then if they come up to speak? That way we have it for the record?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner O'Malley. Julianne or Deputy County Manager, do we have direction for how to make sure that we properly get everybody on record?
Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and defer to DCM Enrico, please.
Madam Chair, there's a couple of options. Certainly, we can do something similar to what we just did now, where we have a group affirmation regarding the oath. And folks can also swear in before they speak if that is amenable to the chair as well. We're making folks swear in just to be clear and certain that although this is legislative in nature, we just want to make sure that folks do swear in in an abundance of caution to make sure that our record is very clear this afternoon.
My co-commissioners, is there, how do folks feel? Is there any, I feel okay going with the groups swearing in, but also willing to ask for more if any other commissioners would like that extra protection.
Madam Chair, just given some issues in the past in terms of procedure, I think it would be best if it just take a couple of seconds to have everybody swear in when they speak.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. And that, that feels fine with me, thank you. And Julianne, just to make sure, would it be Madam Clerk? Or who would swear in folks when they come up or make sure?
Madam Chair, it would be Madam Deputy Clerk Kavanaugh. And just for my clarification, just from my clarification, will public hearing speakers be sworn in or just those that are providing additional information with the presentation?
Madam Chair, Ms. Baca, I think that all folks presenting this afternoon should swear in if we're going to proceed along those lines.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for helping and guided that decision. Great. At this time, Deputy County Manager Enrico Grati or Director Lucas Tafoya, please describe the public hearing item to be considered and state the staff recommendations for the item. Please note, we will hold all questions until the end of the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, this is Lucas Tafoya, Director for the Planning and Development Services Department. Today, we have two agenda items. One is a motion to approve administrative resolution to adopt amendments to the Santalina Level A Master Plan for a Level B2 Plan. And we also have a motion to approve administrative resolution adopting the Santalina Level 2B Plan. Staff has recommended approval. However, the CPC has recommended denial. And now we are before you today to present this for your decision.
Thank you, Director Tafoya. At this time, do any commissioners have any questions for county staff? Before we hear the public hearing.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
This is Lucas Tafoya. Are we going to allow for staff presentation?
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if you can start the staff presentation. Sorry for that.
Staff is ready to present.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. And my name is Catherine Vareca and I'm with planning. And we are going to present two items to you today. They're interrelated items. The first one is SPR 2021 0006. And this is amendments to the Santalina Level A Master Plan. And then the second is SPR 2021 0004. And this is the Santalina B2 Plan. These items are interrelated. So we're recommending that we present the two of them. And then you vote, that you would vote separately at the end. But because they're so interconnected, we'd like to just proceed through the items. As staff will present, we'll be available for questions for each one. And then we'll turn to the applicants for their presentation. And then after that, proceed to the public comment, if that's acceptable to you. Okay.
That sounds perfect, thank you.
All right, thank you. So the, the first item is SPR 2021 0006. And this is a request for amendments to the Santalina Level A Master Plan. The proposed amendments seek to provide consistency between the adopted plan and then the new B2 Plan, particularly in the areas of phasing, water, wastewater provisions, and open space. The Santalina Level A Master Plan, and if we can, if we can switch to the, this map. Okay. Okay, so this is the Santalina Plan area, which is generally bounded by I-40 to the north, 118th Street. And the escarpment open space to the east, the Pajarito Mesa to the south. And then the escarpment area adjacent to Rio Puerto Valley on the west, containing approximately 13,700 acres. And this area is zoned PC Plan Communities. The Santalina Level A Master Plan was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners in June 2021 with 24 findings and 22 conditions. Level A Development Agreement between the county and the developer was also approved in June of, did I say 2021? I meant 2015, sorry. Also in June 2015, the Santalina Level A Development Agreement was approved. There were also some amendments approved in 2017 to make adjustments to conditions related to the provision of water service and the timing of water service. So just to emphasize that this approval and these conditions of approval will remain in place if this request is approved or if it's denied. So the Santalina Level A Plan is not under discussion here. So under this request, the applicant is seeking to make changes to the Level A Plan in accordance with the proposed Level B2 Plan. That is also under consideration today. And this area, it is a small area and you can see it marked here. In the southwestern portion of Santalina is 630 acres. So it's about 5% of the total area of Santalina. And this will be specialized industrial uses following the original land use plan, focusing on energy production, waste disposal, recycling, and, and other related uses which are consistent with the original land use designation. So you can see here, this area in blue is designated industrial and business parks. So these uses are listed as allowed uses in, in this particular area. The reason for the request is that this B2 Plan deviates somewhat from the Level A Plan in terms of phasing, where this was originally shown in an earlier phase of development. And the plan now is to develop this relatively soon to tie into some of the other existing uses nearby the site. And also to make a provision for onsite water and wastewater utilities that were not originally included in the Level A Plan. The request also clarifies language in the zoning section for solar energy production and to make minor modifications to the land use related to open space and also to transportation, just shifting things around a little bit. But it's important to note, without these amendments, the B2 request could not proceed because it would not be consistent with the Level A Plan. So that's why we're amending the Level A Plan to, to create consistency. So staff has recognized in reviewing this request that the Level A Plan was adopted in 2015 and was determined to be consistent with the planned communities criteria and the comprehensive plan. And the expectation is that the project will develop as shown in the plan. And also that it is possible that there can be amendments to the plans. So, you know, just, this is not like a static process. But this process is spelled out in our zoning code for plan adoption and amendments to plans, where the Board of County Commissioners has the final say in approving plans or amendments to plans. So staff has, has reviewed this request, worked substantially over time on the request and has agreed that the proposed changes to the Level A Plan are reasonable and are consistent with those that were approved for the Level A Plan. And this request was first submitted almost a year ago and had, was deferred to allow changes that were requested by staff. And finally, the request did go to the County Planning Commission in March to allow these modifications to the Level A Plan. There were also some corrections that needed to be made to the language at the time that the Planning Commission had, was considering the request. And staff was of the, of the view that the, the corrections or the changes, edits to the language were minor and that those could be cleaned up between the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commission hearing. So that staff did recommend approval of the amendments to the Level A Plan with findings and conditions of approval. And in particular, recognizing that the changes to Level A are needed for the B2 Plan, which will be beneficial as uses such as solar generation and recycling, which are sustainable uses. These uses will also be further refined in another level of planning, which would be subsequent Level C plans. So this is not the end of the planning process here. Nevertheless, the County Planning Commission recommended denial of the amendments to the Level A Plan. A particular concern was the request to allow an onsite water system for the site, even though staff was very clear that this type of system would be limited just to this particular site. Since that time, the applicants and their team have continued working with staff to make the final edits that were suggested at the time of the CPC. And, and staff has also been continuing to look at the, the findings and conditions that were presented to the CPC back in March. So with that, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I, I stand for questions. And also to say too, that we have, we're prepared for either scenario of, of for this request, that our possible approval with findings and conditions or possible denial with findings that would be similar to what the CPC had recommended. So with that, I stand for questions and staff is also available.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Thank you, staff, for all this work. Now I want to ask Commissioners at this time, do any of my fellow Commissioners have any questions for our county staff? We will have public hearing after Commissioners' questions.
I do have some questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
So I think you identified this loc, the location of 608, I believe, acres. This is what we're discussing on this first item. So would you just list, or you could just sort of generally talk again about the, the uses that would be allowed?
So Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, and just to say, we're, we're jumping ahead to the B2 Plan, where the uses are, are specified in the, do you have the Level A? You have the Level A? So for the B, and we can go back to A. But for the B2 Plan, the uses are limited to power generation, specifically solar and wind, battery storage, and that would likely be associated with energy generation, recycling facilities, refuse slash waste disposal, and utility and drainage plans. So can I have the A? And just to say, the A Plan also lists the land use areas that I was showing on the, on the map.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Bertic, can you explain where you're saying we're jumping ahead? And I believe that you presented on both items, right? Is there a clean, clear distinction between the two items? And is there further that you needed, Commissioner O'Malley? Or did that answer your question?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you. And if we can possibly look at the overhead, the land use map again. So the land use map that I showed you previously shows the main districts within Santalina, that the main zoning areas. And, and these include residential, residential village, urban center, town center, industrial. Julianne, can we have a, the overhead, please? Industrial, business park, and open space. And these are all the major land use areas within Santalina. So, and again, this is the Level A Plan. And you can see the, the zoning districts there. And you see on the west side, we have an area called Industrial Business Park. And within the Level A Plan, and this is, this is the Level A Plan here that we're looking at. Each of these, these districts have uses that would generally be allowed. So for Industrial Business Park, which is this area, and the area under discussion is in this box, this, the more specific uses are general industry, heavy industry, power generation, battery storage, wholesale trade, warehouse, freight distribution, eating, commercial, food courts, park, public and civic uses, auto sales. So, and a few other transit, rail, utility, and drainage facilities. So these are uses that were already approved under the Level A, under the Level A Plan. And you may remember that Level A is the first of three steps. So in the second step, then we focus on more specific areas. So, so this is the, the second step that's designated here for the B2 Plan. And it's getting more specific. So this plan limits the uses even further based on that original list. Like I said, power generation, recycling, refuse, waste, utility, and drainage. So it's focusing specifically on those uses. And then also in the B2 Plan, there's more specific information about zoning, design requirements, landscaping, parking, that did not appear in the general Level A Plan. So it's getting, you know, successively more detailed at this level. And there's still one more, one more level after this. But we think this is, the B2 Plan is important because it really, it narrows down the uses that are allowed. So it's really limiting the uses just to these particular uses that, that I listed. So other, other industrial or commercial uses would not be allowed based on the B2 Plan.
Thank you so much. That was very clarifying for me. I have a few more questions, but I want to make sure other Commissioners, any other Commissioners?
I just wanted to finish. I just wanted to finish my comments and questions. So I'll just wait for other Commissioners to, to speak to this issue. I did, and I don't know when it's, 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 when it's appropriate to really delve into the possibilities of, you know, the, and the, the sort of regulations around these particular uses. I don't know if that's later, I'll just wait for other Commissioners to.
Commissioner O'Malley, that's a good question. So the request that we're discussing now establishes the general framework. It really sets the stage for the more specific regulations that appear in the B2 Plan. So under this request, we're really just refining the land uses a little bit in the original plan to, to allow, and I believe it was power, power generation, just to clarify that concept. And then also the, the idea of onsite water and wastewater systems as opposed to the requirement for a full-scale service system that would, would be provided by the Water Utility Authority. So those are concepts that are introduced in this plan. We also tweak the phasing and move the open space. But really, this is, this is more the general, the framework and the concepts. And the actual regulations appear in the B2 Plan.
Right. So I think it'd be important for people to understand, for example, you know, my understanding is landfills are, you know, they're under the state. The state is the one that, you know, regulates landfills and that sort of thing. So I think it'd be important to understand that. And that's where I'd like to go after people make a call.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, and that, that's possible where we're considering these two. We recognize the overlap between the two requests. So, and then we'll take everything under consideration at the end. So it, it may be possible to start discussing those things now or maybe after you've heard everything, that may be the appropriate time. But, but just to say that under the Level A Plan, where we're not proposing to change the language that, that pertains to, that would include landfill, that that was subsumed under, under waste disposal. So that is permissive under the Level A Plan. But in the B2 Plan, that's where the applicant is developing more specific concepts that, you know, might include a landfill or another similar use too.
Right. So I think that's important to understand that because it's pretty, I mean, even though you've, like you said, narrowed down the uses, they're still very interesting. I mean, in terms of like, they're very, I don't know, they're not necessarily compatible. But I mean, I think that the, that the agent can explain some of that maybe later. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, and we agree that is, it is important to work through this at this point in time and not leave it for a successive stage.
Madam Chair, I've got a question, if it's okay.
Yes, Commissioner Benson, in one just moment, I just wanted to flag and say out loud that we know that our hybrid isn't working as excellent as we want it to. And that folks that are on the Zoom can't see the screen. Folks are trying to work on it. So you can go on to GovTV or YouTube where both those spaces have the, you'll get to see the full view. And, but we do understand that that's happening and trying to work on it right now. Yes, Commissioner Benson, please.
Two people have signed up to speak over Zoom and they were kicked out of the Zoom. So if you could let Hornhankoff see it in, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, again, just for clarification, the Level A, which has already been approved, that's not what's in question here, right? It's the further refining of the uses in the land. So, it sounds like there's restrictions being put here, which is what we're voting to approve or not, right? So, based on the new restrictions, you wouldn't be allowed to place a car dealership in this plot. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, sorry, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, that is correct. So, this B2 Plan is limiting the uses to those listed in the B2 Plan.
Okay. So, originally, there was more uses allowed in this land. And what this is doing is refining it to fewer uses. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, that's correct. And folk narrowing down to a very specific geographical area, just the 630 acres that you saw designated there. So, that would limit the uses within that area, not in the broader, the broader plan is not under consideration. That's already been approved.
Okay, thank you. The, why is it important to further narrow the scope in definition?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, this is following our general planning framework in Bernalillo County where we do have specific planning for very large areas like this, that are so large that they can't just all be planned at once, that they have to be done in a sequence of, or a sequence of stages of planning going from A to B to C in succeeding stages. So, from the more general, the concept plan, which is the Level A Plan that covers the whole area and has the general land uses, and then to the B area, which is like regional plan, almost like regional plans or sector plans for more specific areas. So, we have one Level B Plan that was approved mainly for the eastern portion of Santalina. That's already been approved, the Level B1 Plan. So, this is the Level B2 Plan covering another area within Santalina. So, it's just, at each level, it gets more specific.
Okay. So, it's, so like, back to the car dealership reference, that it would prevent the entire area from being nothing but car dealerships by further refining in further detail, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, that's correct. This won't impact the broader plan.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for those clarifying questions, Commissioner Benson. I did have a, I think mine follows up to Commissioner Benson's. When we, he was using the example of car dealerships. Do we have details on what this, on what the folks who are proposing this amendment want to do, or will be able to, want to do with this 608 acres in this amendment? Like, do we know what their plans are?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so that's the essence of the B2 Plan, that it gets into greater detail of the different areas that fall within a geographic area. So, the B2 Plan includes a section on land use, on zoning, transportation, open space, and utilities. And each of those sections go into detail about what the particular systems will be, what the regulations will be, showing illustrations, and including any particular requirements that would be imposed at this level. So, and just to say, too, that these areas coincide with staff's areas. So, that each of our participating staff has weighed in on each of these chapters, land use, zoning, transportation, natural resources, that over the past couple of years, we've all been actively involved in helping to elaborate the concepts that the applicant is interested in, and then putting them into the plan that they can be appropriately articulated, and then that they can be implemented. So, but that's the level of detail that's in the B2 Plan. And there will be another step of planning within the B2 area. If it gets approved, then there could be successive, even more detailed plans, whether they're plans, or they could be subdivisions or site plans. But those are, you know, that's still required prior to the actual development of this area. So, there's still more planning to go with this. But I just wanted to add, too, that we're also following the Plan Communities criteria, which is a document that the county and the city adopted in 1991. And that this document includes specific requirements that have to be addressed at each level, at the general concept level, at the, you know, the more successive, the B2 level, and then finally at the site plan or the site development plan level. And there are specific criteria that have to be addressed in the plans. And that's where staff also works with applicants to make sure that they've worked through their plans, that it's a workable plan, that it's feasible technically, that, you know, it's not something that's going to cause problems as it proceeds through the development process.
Madam Chair, may I make a suggestion? This is Lucas Tefoa.
Yes.
So, as this is being presented, it was staff's intention to present as an A, and then let the applicant present their A portion, and then staff come back and present B, and the applicant come back and present their B portion. But they're so intertwined that it is difficult to understand these concepts separately. So, I'm wondering if it would be acceptable to the Commission to allow Ms. Verrek to finish with the B, so that it ties it all in together, the A and B presentation, and then the applicant come in, discuss their A and B presentation, but then at the end, these still be voted on separately, so that it makes more sense as these are coming together? Because we're, you all are asking questions about B, and we're still talking about A. So, if we just talk about it all together, and then, but vote separately, because these are two separate motions. That's my suggestion.
Yes. Thank you, Director Tefoa, for that. And yeah, I think we need just to be very clear and not, for us Commissioners and for the public, right, so that we're being clear. So, I appreciate that. I would like us to move on, have Ms. Verrek finish with the Plan B. Are you suggesting, Director Tefoa, that then we don't have questions after we let the proponents say their A and B, and then go to questions? I think that...
I do have some questions, I think, applied to this section. Just a couple.
Okay, let's take Commissioner Benson's question.
Madam Chair, there's a comment from the audience.
Madam, the Chair can't hear you unless you're speaking at a microphone.
Yeah, and I know, we're not taking, we'll be taking public hearing after the presentations are done.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. This isn't a public comment. It's a comment about the procedure being followed, and it'll be brief.
Madam Chair, will you allow the comment from the speaker at the podium?
Yeah, I'll allow this one comment, but we can't have this continually happen because we have to keep with the process.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So, my understanding is that we're following the rules of procedure for the general zoning hearings. There's nothing in Rule 19 that allows for the developer to provide a separate comment. The rule provides only for staff presentation followed by public comment. If the developer would like to present a comment, their comment has to be treated like other members of the public at this time. I'm sure Commissioners, you all are familiar with your own rules, but...
I'd like input from the county attorney on that.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson. So, we're following the procedures of a public hearing. And so, in general, for a public hearing, we've generally allowed in the past the applicant or the staff to present the overall case. In this case, since these Level A and Level B are inextricably tied, we've decided that we can present them together. The modifications to the Level A Plan were relatively minor, given the request for the Level B Plan. Generally speaking, we would allow the applicant to then present their case, and then take public comment from the public in general, including anybody that has been noticed or anybody that's signed up to speak. The procedures for our general rules of, the general rules for procedure for the zoning hearings do apply for quasi-judicial cases. In this case, this is really a public hearing. And as such, we've allowed and gone through pains to allow the public to speak at length on this item, sign up to speak. If this were an appeal item, then those timeframes for speaking and procedure would be much more, they would be completely quantified down to the minute, and then cross-examination and so on. In the past, and we've always allowed these types of hearings to proceed, again, as a public hearing and not as a quasi-judicial item.
Madam, before you continue, if you can state your name for the record.
Thank you. This is me. I'm Montoya Hammersley. I'm a staff attorney with the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. Thank you, Chair Barbeau, and members of the Commission. I have your procedures pulled up right here, and I'll just read directly from Rule 19, Public Hearings Procedures. Subsection B says, "Following presentation by county staff, the chair shall accept public comment on the agenda item." If we were operating under the procedures of a quasi-judicial hearing where there have been, there has been an appeal, where there would be, you know, more stringent time limits for each party to present their argument, then the developers would have an opportunity to present and make an argument. And the party opposing their appeal would also have the same opportunity to present their argument. Here, there was no appeal of the CPC decision. We are following the rules of the general zoning procedures. Like I said, there is no, there's nothing in the rule that contemplates a separate presentation by the developer in addition to staff. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Nicholas Hamm, zoning administrator for the county. The nicely at the podium has correctly referenced the procedures for a quasi-judicial hearing. As Mr. Grati mentioned in his comments previously, these are legislative items before you. So, we're following the public hearing format. And his statement is also accurate to say that it is generally accepted that staff give a presentation, the applicant for the application before you give a presentation, and we allow for public comment. If we were to be operating under the appeals process, that would actually further narrow the time and the limits for folks to participate. It wouldn't allow for all of these nice people to show up tonight to give their comments to you. The public hearing format actually provides more opportunity for comments, so you can hear all sides of the arguments and make your deliberation, and then make a decision based upon those. And Madam Chair, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Director Nickham and City County Manager Grati. I think I feel good with that, that we can have the applicant in this public hearing continue and give a brief presentation, and then go to public comment.
Chair Barbeau, may I make a closing statement before I return to my seat?
Sure.
So, the rules that Mr. Hamm is referencing, rules of procedure for quasi-judicial proceedings and regular zoning meetings, we're not operating under quasi-judicial hearings. And if the county is not following these procedures, the only other procedures available are for administrative proceedings. And it's my understanding that this is a zoning proceeding and not an administrative proceeding. So, I'd just like to register our objection. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
This is a legislative matter. We've made that very clear. So, it's not quasi-judicial. We want to be very clear about that. However, and I'm not sure how we do this. I mean, I think that it's important to hear from the folks who want to do this, so that they can answer questions about what they want to do. It makes sense that we have, you know, I mean, I guess they come up for two minutes and exchange. I mean, I don't know what the point of that is, but they're going to have to respond. And this is, you know, they want this Level B, you know, approval, and we have to be able to understand what they want to do before we give them, we grant that entitlement. And this is an entitlement. So, how are we supposed to know unless we have an opportunity to, you know, question them? So, I'm not sure how that works. But, and I think you, Mr. Grati, you have some comment?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, basically, I just wanted to further reiterate that Section 19 of the Rules of Procedure for the Bernalillo County Commission Regarding Public Hearings does allow for staff to present this case or the request. It allows for the applicant, as you mentioned, to further detail and respond to questions from the Commission. It also allows for the public to speak on this matter, all in the framework of a legislative item without particular timeframes or cross-examination requirements. So, this is a process that we have followed traditionally for most plans and quasi-legislative items in the past. And we, I feel very strongly that it is consistent with our rules of procedure for this Commission. And in response to your theory about allowing the applicant to make their case, detail their request, put the information out to everybody in attendance, to then encourage debate, discussion, and further questions of the details of the proposal, I think is the appropriate way to proceed, given a legislative format.
Thank you, Mr. Grati. I definitely feel okay to move forward with this process and the format we were going. And folks' comments were noted.
Madam Chair, I've got...
Commissioner Benson, do you want to ask a few questions, and then we move on to finishing the staff presentation, so then we can then have a brief presentation by the applicant?
Yes, Madam Chair, and actually, I will defer to you. I have questions specifically regarding this Level A, regarding why it's been submitted. But I can also save those questions for the end, if it makes any...
I think, go ahead. Let's close out with you on the questions and move on to the Plan B presentation.
Okay, thank you. So, the staff recommended approval to this planning development. That's correct, right?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's correct.
To Plan B. I want to make sure I'm clear. Plan B2, staff recommended approval.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, that's correct.
Okay. And then, the Commission denied it. The staff approved it because it fit within the framework of what has already been approved. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, that's part of the reason, yes, that it is consistent with what was already approved under the Level A Plan.
Okay, thank you. And then, the Commission denied it, and I believe you said it was because of an onsite water issue. Is that correct?
Madam Chair Commissioners, so generally, they were concerned with that. If you read back through the record or the minutes, that they did state that they were concerned about the onsite water system.
Okay. Will that be addressed?
So, Madam Chair Commissioners, and we can...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Benson, so if you'd like, we can proceed to talk about the B2 Plan, or if you want to hear more about this, you...
Catherine, if we can defer to the Chair, I think she's trying to chime in.
I'll defer to Chair.
Ms. Catherine Verk, if you could, and then I think we should move on to B2, but if you could just repeat, I believe in your first sort of presentation, you did, you know, mention about the water uses. If you could repeat that and then agree, we can move on to, just to, I think that might support Commissioner Benson's question, and then, of course, we can hear more and ask again.
Madam Chair, I'm going to defer to Dan McGregor to answer questions of... Madam Chair, I'm going to defer to Dan McGregor to answer questions about the concept of the onsite water system. Would that help to answer your question?
Sure.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Dan McGregor with Burnley County Public Works, Natural Resource Services Manager. And this is kind of the point of juncture between the A and B, which is why I volunteered to step in. So, one of the primary reasons for having to amend the Level A stems back to when that Level A plan was initially approved. As part of that approval, the applicant provided a master water utility plan, which is specified in the planning committee, plant community's criteria. In that initial water plan, they showed significant infrastructure in that 602 acres. Because of their change in conceptual use of that 602 acres to these lower water use facilities, the need for that infrastructure in that portion of the master plant area is no longer there. But we have a Level A based on a master utility plan that shows this infrastructure, that's no longer going to be required. So, because of what they want to do now with their Level B, we have to address what was put in the Level A, and also the corresponding conditions eight, nine, and 11, which were previously amended. So, if you want to think of it as needing to go back to the Level A to clean up the record, I think that would be an apt way of thinking about it. And I know the applicant will be addressing the actual water use, and what they're proposing in the Level B two is that the facilities that they're talking about are all low water use facilities, the infrastructure's not needed, and I believe the applicant's prepared to talk about the comparison of the, of the, what would have been required under the Level A if it weren't being amended versus what's being proposed.
Madam Chair.
Thank you so much for that, Mr. McGregor. Yes, Commissioner Kizada.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I'm just, I'm starting to get a little confused, I think we're in two different weeds here. Is this a zoning meeting? Are we just talking about just zoning and land use? Doesn't the water question come up, like either in Plan C, or does it go through the Water Utility Authority? And since it's, and since it's also a, you know, not going to be used for a different use that the state has to also approve, so it's got to go through different things. And so, I thought today, just like the last time we had a zoning meeting, we weren't really discussing water per se, because unless that's going to change what happened at the CPC. So, if they're going to bring up new information to this particular body, don't we think that they should go back to the CPC if they're going to bring new different type of information, based on that they made a decision on land use, based on water use? I don't know if that's even within the purview of the CPC, and I'm not even quite sure it's within the purview of this board, since we are just looking today at land use, zoning uses for land use. So, I don't know if we're getting ourselves into trouble by even discussing that, or, and if we didn't get either legal or somebody to clarify that for me, that would be great.
Thank you, Commissioner Kizada, and I'll let Mr., I don't know if Mr. McGregor wants to offer, but I do think that both for the public and, like Director Tafoya has mentioned, right, these issues are intertwined, and I think you understand it, maybe, Commissioner Kizada, a little bit deeper than the rest of us, but I think that's what I'm also trying to get at, that this, this does not include water use, and that's what I was sort of hoping that Ms. Reck would repeat, and, but I definitely appreciate Mr. McGregor's insight, right? But as Ms. Reck had stated at the beginning, the water uses are so limited to, to this system. You said, "I'd like more details on that, I have questions for future," but I think it's just, for me, it's to clarify the big question about water use, that was part of it, and I think it's our decision of permission to make this, and, you know, whatever reason, the Planning Commission made their decision, it's now in our, in our court. So, yes, let's ask other questions, and if there's any other guidance that we need around that question being legal or not, please, I ask our Burnco staff to provide any information.
So, Madam Chair, Commissioners, with your permission. So, the, the issue today is not one of water use directly, so let me state that just straight out. The question today is what water and sewer infrastructure is necessary in that area of the B two to, to meet the needs that are being proposed. And I am kind of splitting the two things apart, but it is an important differentiation, because the change in the infrastructure plan is what's triggering even looking at the Level A. It happens to be that the infrastructure is changing because the intended water use is significantly less. So, although I split, they're interrelated, and I hope that helps clarify. And with that, I'd leave it to Mr. Grady and to county legal.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. And I think we're going to move forward with the finish of staff presentation, and then we'll allow commissioners to ask some questions, and we'll proceed to applicant's brief presentation, and further questions from commissioners, and then public comment.
Madam Chair, can I just make a comment for the, for the room and the, and the audience online?
What was that comment?
One quick comment. So, this is, this is a new procedure for us to blend online and in-person comment. The online participants, Madam Chair and Commissioner Kizada, cannot hear any comment from the audience, so while we, we can hear it and appreciate it, you'll be better served by coming up to the microphone at your time. Also, Madam Chair, Mr. Grady stood up to speak, and I was hoping he might be able to clarify one last item before we move on to the final presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson, and yes, Mr. Grady. And please, we do not want any shouting out in the chambers, we won't hear it, not everybody will get to hear it, so please, there will be time for public comment. Yes, Commissioner, Mr. Grady.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the Commission. So, I just wanted to kind of reiterate and maybe bring together some of the comments that Ms. Reck and Mr. McGregor had regarding the type of meeting this is. This is, the zoning for this entire Santalina Level A area is zoned PC. The zoning matter has largely been decided. Also, in 2015, the Level A plan was adopted. That's been decided, right? So, those things are kind of the background, but that's not what we're here to discuss. We're really here to discuss a minor amendment of the Level A plan and the proposal of a Level B two plan. The minor amendment of the Level A plan is in place, because in 2015, when the plan was proposed and adopted, it was anticipated that these industrial areas would be consuming vast amounts of water in conjunction with those industrial uses. Since 2015, there's been issues with the applicant being able to secure water for this area. In that time, since then, there's been an effort on their part to try to encourage or utilize those areas for uses that do not consume water. Solar panels do not consume water, wind generation does not consume water, recycling areas, landfills, those types of things are very low water users. So, for this 600 and some odd acres, because it's not going to require major water infrastructure or use of potable water, the Level A plan has to be amended to reflect that. Once that is addressed, then we can discuss the Level B two plan. But the two are very closely related, so I didn't want to make a case that one is completely different than the other. So, I hope that is helpful on some level. I stand for any questions.
Madam Chair, did she leave? Who's here? Are you still there?
I'm here. Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I think I understand what we're trying to do. So, to reiterate, right, Level A plan was approved with all these uses, you know, and that was, that the zoning actually was approved in connection with the master plan not too long ago, which, you know, allowed the plan to basically, to move forward. Now, we're starting to get a little deeper into what's, what the uses would be, and so now the uses have been, you know, narrowed quite a bit, and because the Level A plan, let's see if you understand this, anticipated that there would be other uses, and there was all this water infrastructure associated with it, then the Level A plan needs to be amended. Is that's correct? Okay. So, I know it gets a little complicated. Land use and development is very, it's not, you know, laypeople, I think, have a hard time with, unless, you know, you kind of get involved with it, or you've done some work around this, it's kind of hard to understand. Okay, so what's next? I think that's, thank you. Presentation? Okay. Thank you.
I think I'm going to do, let's do B. Madam Chair Commissioners, so appropriate, because there's so, so much overlap between the concepts in A and then, and then the B two plan, that we can just proceed to talk more about the B two, the B two plan. So, this is, this is a, this is SPR 20220004, and this is a request for the approval of the Santalina Level B two master plan in a portion of the Santalina Level A master plan. And I've already shown you the land use plan, so, so if possible, if we can just look at this overhead here again, to see the location of the B two plan. As we said previously, the Santalina Level A plan was approved in 2015 because it addressed the plant community's criteria, and it provided conditions of approval and a development agreement that ensured appropriate development. And it's not, not solely about land use, but about other areas that, that fall into, into any development area, transportation, utilities, open space, parks and trails, that all of these need to be addressed in plans of this scale. So, this B two plan specifically is for 630 acres, as shown on the map, and as we've been saying, it includes more specific uses, energy and solid waste in particular. And it follows the Level A plan, land use, zoning, transportation, utilities, environment, and open space, but to a greater level of detail. And as we've been saying, the utilities chapter sets forth a system exclusively for the B two, the B two area, where onsite utilities, namely water and wastewater, will be allowed and will not require connections to the Albuquerque-Burnley County Water Utility Authority network. So, these would just be onsite where water would be brought to the site. The zoning chapter also goes into greater detail for specific uses and design requirements that are appropriate for these particular types of uses. As we said, waste disposal, recycling, energy generation, utility, and drainage facilities. So, these uses are very limited to ones that do not require water service. Also, the transportation chapter does tie into the broader road network in the metropolitan area, and specifically for Santalina. So, as we've been saying, the requests and the concepts that have been provided in these two documents appear to be generally acceptable, because they seek to follow or further the plans and the goals of the Santalina Level A plan, which in turn are based on the reserve area and the plant community's criteria. Some of the uses proposed may be considered to be beneficial to the community, including energy and natural resource production, waste management, and recycling. This request was first submitted over a year ago, so there has been a good deal of work on this, refinement of this concept, and even that the Level A plan has been brought back in for, for some amendments to accommodate the B two plan. So, all of this has taken time. So, staff has been prepared to recommend approval of the B two request. Conditions of approval limit the specific utility system just to this area, and not to other areas in Santalina. The Level A amendments have just been presented that help to accommodate this type of a system. At the March hearing of the CPC, staff did have editorial comments, which were presented at the time of the, of the Planning Commission hearing, but the Planning Commission elected not to recommend approval of this request, as we said, that they seemed to want some further clarification of the, of the water system that was being proposed on the site. So, assuming that the Level A amendments are approved, and if this B two plan is approved, there would be conditions of approval that need to be met, including platting, a development agreement, and Level C plans that will have even more detail, and will need to continue to be consistent with both the A plan and then the B two plan. So, this is not the final opportunity for staff to weigh in on this request, there will be subsequent opportunities to review smaller versions. So, in conclusion, this, this request does reflect several years of work with staff and the applicant, and staff has felt that this plan is acceptable. The land uses in this plan are consistent with those in the Level A plan, which designates the site as an industrial business park. The area of the site is relatively small, it's only 5% of the entire plan area, and the request is for very limited specific uses. And the uses will also be regulated as they proceed by federal, state, and local agencies as, as required. So, so that, you know, needs to be clear, if this is approved, but then also in subsequent Level C plans, that state, federal, and local regulations will need to be, will need to be complied with, and I see Commissioner O'Malley that this, this may.
Just real quick, Madam Chair, I just missed, ask a real quick question. So, you keep mentioning that, you know, we have, you know, we had the broader plan, and then we had narrowing down the uses, and we are, you know, dealing with, you know, what's really going to take place there. What's the next level? Is it C? And for refining that and all that, does C come to the commission for approval?
Madam Chair Commissioners, Commissioner O'Malley, so yes, if B two is approved, then the next step would be a Level C plan that may cover this whole area, or several Level C plans that will be more specific. Say, half of, half of this could come in with a Level C plan, which may entail, you know, a general overview and description of the, the different elements in that area, transportation, more specific land uses, the water and the wastewater, and really attaching it specifically to the site, so that it would very likely come with a site development plan. And then, it would basically be ready for, if the C plan is approved, then it would be ready for building permits.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, just to say, I completed my presentation, and I stand for any other questions.
Thank you again, Ms. Reck.
Thank you again, Ms. Recker. And yes, Commissioners, I opened the floor for you. Do you have any other questions for Ms. Recker or county staff? Okay, I see no other questions. I did have, I just, I think we've, we've said it a few times, right? But I, my follow-up question was also about the water, which I think has been answered, that I guess one of my questions, just a clear, direct question to our county staff, is the current proposal being developed a threat to the environment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. The, the current request has been vetted through various county departments to ensure that it is consistent with all of codes, ordinances and policies regarding groundwater. This will also have to move on and receive an air quality permit from the City County Air Quality Board if it is approved. If this is approved, it will also have to go to the state of New Mexico to be regulated as a landfill, if the landfill portion is approved. With regards to solar power generation, battery storage, wind generation, all of those items would be evaluated against both city, county and state ordinances to, not city, but county and state ordinances to ensure that they meet those requirements with regards to impact on the environment. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much. And does this, does the work done now, I, I think I heard this, I just want to ask it again to make sure I heard correctly, that the, this proposed amendment does not impact or change the current Level A plan and all the work that folks did previous to my time to make sure that was a planned communities area? This is outside of that, only pertains to this 608 or two acres? And, and, and that, anything that is, moves forward from here does not impact the rest of that plan? I believe that was what I heard. I want confirmation or clarity.
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I'll respond to that. Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes, I believe that this proposal is consistent with, and that is why staff supported, consistent with what was adopted in 2015 in the overall master plan framework. This 650 acres is a small portion of a larger area that was identified for industrial uses. Of course, this, we did not anticipate a lower water use in place at this time, but it is, by and large, 90, 97% consistent with what was adopted with the Level A plan.
Thank you so much for that clarity. Let me make sure I don't miss any of my other question. I believe Commissioner Benson spoke really clearly to that it narrows the focus and maybe he mentioned is refining. I don't know whether it's refining or not, but it definitely narrows the scope and, and gives us more clarity on the limited uses before is bigger. And this is a step in the process of phases for an already, yeah, a phases to be able to make use of this land that is permissible in its current, this, that is permissible under the current zoning code for this area. I know I'm asking a little bit of repeat, but I just want to make sure I'm confirming my understanding.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, yes. Overall, the request for the Level B2 plan is consistent and has been evaluated by staff, multiple staff from different departments to ensure its consistency with Level A plan. Of course, some of the modif-, it is slightly different in that, again, we did not anticipate lower no water use and we did not anticipate them not being connected to the larger water framework. But again, these uses were derived to ensure that they were things that did not require water. So, that is a slight deviation from the Level A plan, but it is a deviation that I do believe may address the concerns that people had back in 2015 regarding water consumption. But overall, with regards to the operations and the industrial uses that were described for this site and approved, we believe, and I believe staff believes, that it is largely consistent with those principles and that framework that was adopted in 2015.
Thank you very much, Deputy County Manager. I believe those are all my questions. Does any other Commissioner have any follow-up questions for our county staff? Okay, thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that I have gotten a few comment, texts and messages, but the YouTube is down. Again, we are trying our best in this hybrid moment. Our folk person is working on it, hopefully resolve that as well. We will now move on to the applicant's brief presentation, following Commissioner questions, following public comment. Julianne, can you please invite the applicant up to present?
Mr. Jim Stroger is at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Stroger. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jim Stroger. I'm principal with Consensus Planning located here in Albuquerque, and I'm here today representing the project. I do, I guess, in light of the Commissioner's comment is-
Madam Chair, could, could we just swear him in real quick?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Stroger, thank you very much. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I did just want to make sure that the people, the members of the public that are joining online are able to see the GovTV feed and participate. Hopefully, that's happening. We certainly, we certainly, that's, I think that's important. So, and I want to be, I'll, I'll be very brief. I, I've got a little presentation here and, and Ms. Baca, Ms. Julianne Baca, could we get that up on the screen? All right, thank you. All right, so, we're here to talk about the Level A Plan Amendment and the Level B2 Plan. I want to introduce our project team. With me here today, Mr. Matt Look is with Garrett Development. He's here today. Myself and Shawna Belay from Consensus Planning have been working on this project. Mark Turnbaugh is an environmental consultant. And if you have specific questions about the NMED permit process, I'm going to turn it over to him for those. And Ms. Jenica Jacoby with the Rhodey Law Firm is also here as part of the team. I want to thank staff. As Ms. Berec mentioned, we've been working on this a long time. I can't count the number of meetings that we've had with large groups, small groups of staff. There's been a lot of collaboration and work to get to this point with them. I think, I think it's been over two years that we've been working on this to get to this point. We did provide both clean and redline versions of the Level A amendments as well as the Level B2 plan for your consideration today. All right, so once again, it's been stated a couple of times, but the Level B2 plan area, which is where these amendments focus in the Level A plan and the subsequent Level B2 document, really refer to this area that's highlighted on the map. It's 630 acres. It's about 4.5% of the almost 14,000 acres that's addressed with the Level A Master Plan. The Level A amendment that's before you really does a, a few things. It, it changes the phasing. So, it adds this Level B2 plan area into the first phase of the non-residential phasing for the project. It is, just to clarify again, it is completely within the industrial and business park land use category from the Level A plan. This amendment also allows for onsite water and sewer infrastructure, which is defined in these documents, within the Level B2 area for uses that do not need and are not requesting water and sewer infrastructure extensions from the ABCWUA, or what I'll refer to later as just the Water Authority, for simplicity. And all the proposed B2 uses are approved and permissive in the Level A plan. And minor adjustment to the open space boundary was also done as part of this to make sure there was not any overlap between the larger kind of regional park that's identified to the east and, and the Level B2 plan. And just, I think, Commissioner Benson, your question earlier about the uses, just so, on page 45 of the Level A plan is where the industrial and business park district uses are enumerated, and there are 15 listed. And so, we've talked about taking this and, and taking it from a, a broader list of uses and focusing it down on a smaller list. So, just if you're following along, under those permissive land uses in the industrial and business park, number three is power generation, solar, wind, biofuels, gas is listed under there. We're talking about solar and wind today. Number four, battery storage. 12, recycling facilities, refuse and waste disposal. And 15, utility and drainage facilities. So, those are the, those are the specific land uses from the original list that was provided in the Level A plan that are, that are proposed for this area. All right, moving on, so that, that's basically the Level A Plan Amendment. And then moving into the Level B2 Master Plan, in summary, once again, permissive uses are narrowed down, renewable, green, power generation, solar and wind, battery storage, which is actually a component of that green energy grid that we're, I think there's a lot of efforts working on that around the state and, and within, within our community. And just to be clear, that does not include battery recycling or disposal. That's not a part of that. We're talking battery storage as part of the power management system for renewable energy systems. And then refuse, waste disposable, waste disposal, non-hazardous solid waste and utility and drainage facilities once again. This is in an area, the B2 area, yeah, I think people have looked at this as if it's, you know, a big jump across Santalina to get to this area. Actually, this is the area of, of the, the property where we actually have adjacent land uses. So, adjacent to this, we've got a PNM solar array that was already constructed. It's operational. We've got the Sero Colorado Municipal Landfill to the west. We've got the Speedway that's been out there for a long time and the County Detention Center. Those are all proximate to this, to this Level B2 plan area that we're talking about today. We've got a number of water use restrictions that are included in the Level B2 plan. I want to go through those quickly. No wells permitted as part of this project. No Water Authority infrastructure is being requested to support this project. Hauled water, non-potable for dust and fire suppression and potable water for employees use, the minimal number of employees would also be provided by a service provider like Culligan. Probably, you know, it's like Kleenex, right? I guess I can say that. Traffic restrictions, less than 500 trips per day total. We had a lot of meetings and conversations with your transportation staff looking at, at the, the small amount of traffic that could be generated from, from this, from this project. And we cap that in the document itself. There are land covenant restrictions that the owner has put on this property for any future sales of, of property in this area, and that addresses the, the waste portion. And, and I'll just read it for you. No hazardous waste, hazardous materials, hazardous substances, all as defined under federal or state law, including the solid waste facility laws, will be disposed of or deposited on the property or any solid waste facility on the property. All right, so I want to, a little bit the relationship. So, one of the, one of the uses that, that we've anticipated for this area is a solid waste management facility, a landfill. And there's a relationship between the county's process and the state process. And I just want to clarify a couple of things related to that. And once again, if you want to drill down deeper, Mark's here. But, so, in order for an applicant to request a permit through the state, the county has to, the zoning has to be in place that would allow that use to be done on that particular piece of property. So, that is what we are doing with this Level B2 plan, is clarifying and drilling down on that particular use as being a, a permitted use within this property. There's also then that permit process from, through NMED, that would include any restriction. So, I, I mentioned the restriction that the property owner has already placed on the property if it's, if it's purchased for this use, but also any restrictions that come out of this process through Bernaleo County would be carried forward into that permit process. So, there is a relationship between those two things, and I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as well. All right, talk a little bit about water use. So, we went back to the original water master plan, and I think Mr. Grati mentioned this, that, you know, originally, when, when the water master plan was done, we looked at how much water could typical industrial, light industrial uses, how much do they need on a, on a daily basis? And, and within the Level A Master Plan, the water master plan, it quantified that. I've got a little graphic that maybe shows that a little bit clearer. So, so within the 1,526 acres that were identified within Zone 7W, it quantified it within the various water zones, all of the B2 plan is within that 7W area. So, for all of the industrial land that was within 7W, it quantified that as potentially needing a maximum of a little over 7.6 million gallons a day. If you take the proportional share of this 630 acres as a part of that, which is about 41% of that area, that, that equates to a little less than 3.2 million gallons a day. When, when Mr. Grati talked about the specific uses being identified here as using minimal amounts of water, that's estimated at 5,000 gallons a day for, for dust suppression and, and operations of, of these uses. If it's solar, for instance, they really don't use much water, other than occasionally they go out and have to clean those panels. So, very minimal water use. We've very conservatively estimated a maximum of 2,000 gallons of potable water that would be, once again, there'd be an onsite system that provides that for employees. We think the actual number is going to be significantly less than that. So, just putting that in perspective relating what was anticipated and planned for in the water master plan versus what we're talking about here today. The other thing is, so, within the solid waste management regulations, there's a category of, of waste. This is not hazardous waste, but special waste categories. And these are types of waste that I think could say need special handling procedures as part of their management. And so, we just, we've got a list of those uses- And so we just, we've got a list of those uses and we've identified the ones that we are seeking to have the ability to take care of if this, if there's a landfill located on this property as compared to that which are approved for Sero Colorado. So you can see the distinction between those two. And I want to say, so the impetus for this landfill is, is a couple of things. One is to service the, oops, did I, I think I got it all. The, is to serve local industries that are, and primarily the existing recycling industry that recycles metals and automobiles. And those processes result in a substance called ASR or fluff, and that material needs to be stored and in a, as a special waste. It's in the last category, the solid waste, not otherwise specified, I think is what that acronym stands for. And ASR is a part of that. And so this would be specialized landfill, if you will, that, that addresses those uses and once again, supports industries that are in our local community. So in conclusion, I just want to wrap this up, that we're following the process that was laid out to us by the planning staff, Level A Plan Amendment and Level B Plan for this area. The proposed uses were anticipated and allowed by the Level A Master Plan. Once again, I read, read you that list from the Level A Plan. It will allow for development in an area with adjacent development and roadway access. The roadway that goes to the detention center would just need to be extended south to get access, but, and this is one of those places where it's got like three different names. So Shelley Road, Sero Colorado Road, I think there's another one when it gets into the, to the jail property. But there is, the, the roads exist and would need to be extended.
We need to put this in full screen. Do you know how to do this? It needs to be in full screen.
Getting some technical assistance here.
Full screen.
Because this is, oh, oh, is that better for you all?
Mr. Schroeder, was the last slide you were just on, is that the full list? It looks like it's cut off at the bottom of the page. I'm just wanting to make sure.
I think that's what they were trying to fix, was the half cutoff. So maybe you can read.
That is the full list of what is, what those items that are considered special waste. Okay, thank you.
We don't see it on the Zoom right now. I don't want to make more, I could see half of it before.
Did that make it worse?
I think you see 100 of me.
So I can go through this. So, so regulated asbestos waste is, is one item of special waste.
I'm actually going to ask you, Mr. Schroeder, I just don't want to have too much time. So I wanted you to jump to your, I don't want to give you more time than our county staff had. So I think if you can post the list, folks there can see it. I can pull it up. I believe Commissioner Kassad can too. We have the presentation, our packets. And, and yeah, if you want to close up your.
All right. I just, yeah, I want to make sure you, you were able to see that, and my apologies for not having.
No, not at all. Appreciate it, not, nothing on you. It's sort of what we can see and can't see. So thank you.
All right. So going back to the concluding comments, that it will not adversely impact the water supply at 0.2% of what was anticipated for this area in terms of water use that was planned for. It will not adversely impact the traffic due to the low traffic volumes being generated by the uses anticipated. The solid waste facility, once again, is to serve local recycling and industrial businesses. It restricts the type of special waste permitted, and that was the list I just showed you. And any solid waste management facility requires additional NMED permitting, and that separate process would be after this process. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schroeder. You might want to stay there. Yes.
I'm not going anywhere.
I, I just want to, so in terms of location of facilities or where things would be placed, that would come through in a plan in the C proposal. Is that correct?
The specific site plan.
Right, the site plan itself, as to where things are located.
So, so any, any implementation of any of those uses that were on that list I went through, so if it's a solar array, wind generation, battery storage, or a solid waste management facility, all of those would require a site plan through the Level C process before they could get a building permit.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Schroeder from the commission? Questions, comments?
Thank you very much. And, and we'll be available to answer questions at the end after public comment as well. Thank you.
I had a couple of questions I just wanted to give, because, sorry, Mr. Schroeder. I just wanted to make sure, again, more in like making sure I'm understanding things clearly, right? The details will go on, like Commissioner O'Malley was just asking. I would like for you to define ASR. And when you say, well, go ahead and do that.
All right. I, I will, I will give it my best shot and Mr. Turnbach can correct me if I say something incorrect. But so the, the process of recycling automobiles for, and, and other components for recyclable metals, that goes through a process, and there are a couple of facilities in Burnley County that do that today. The byproduct of that process is called ASR. And it is an inert material that is, and, and maybe I should have said this during my presentation, but one of the ideas for having this particular landfill that is, allows disposal of this ASR material is that the recycling process and technology continues to get better and better. And all those things that we use that include metals and all these special metals, they, they are reclaimed through this recycling process. And there is a, at least the thought that if you have this ASR material stored in a way that you know where it is, it's contained, and the technology improves to a level where you could pull that ASR out and re-recycle it and get more metals out of, through a secondary process, that, that is something that would be desirable in order to enhance the ability to further recycle that material. It is, once again, it's an inert material that gets, right now, I believe that that is being sent up to the landfill in Rio Rancho primarily from Burnley County.
Thank you so much for that definition and explanation. One more question from me. When you say that this landfill's purpose is to support local industries and that may, within permissible, as we've explained over time, but the local industries, does your client or the applicant have a commitment to local industries being supported? Is that, yeah, where does that fall in the next steps?
So the, the business that the driver of this, this landfill is in is metal recycling. That is the primary driver for this. But, but since he's in the business of having to dispose of his industrial waste, which is this ASR material, and he knows how expensive that is in these other, other landfills, he feels that there is an opportunity to provide a similar service to other industries within the, within the business community here that, that would be potential.
Thank you. And just to sort of ask in another way, is there, like, and I, I don't know that this gauges my opinion on this, or I just want to be very clear and transparent, that might come from out of state, that might be in state, that might be Burnley County only? Or do you all have clear vision for that or?
The intent is for, to serve local businesses within the metropolitan area. That's the, that's the intent. The, there is another component and, and that is a part of this anticipated landfill, and that was actually in response, was not part of the agenda, but it was in response to a request from the State Land Commissioner that there be an opportunity for our client to have a tire baling machine. So we've got a huge, we've got a huge problem in the state of New Mexico and I think also in Burnley County and the surrounding counties with illegal disposal of used tires. And those of you who go back a little ways and remember the River of Tires up in Wagon Mound and property owner that was, it was actually, I think, Alessi on state land that was putting all these tires, I think over a million of them, on that property. We have been asked to, to do a tire baling operation and then store those tires separately in a separate trench on the property that, once again, I think the anticipation is that if and when, I think it's more likely when, the recycling process becomes economically viable to recycle those tires and make a useful product out of them. I know one of the things that they make out of them in, in other places is asphalt. And those, the tires, it is anticipated that they might, they would probably come from areas outside of the metro area. And, and those would be, you know, coming from, but within the state of New Mexico, but not, so, so I want to be clear, when you asked the question, Madam Chair, about what, what geographic area this, this project would serve, that the used tire component would likely serve businesses outside of, and this would be, this is not the person coming with a pickup truck of, of tires. This is, those operations, the, the tire stores and those types of operations that generate a significant amount of used tires, and right now it's very difficult to dispose of those. And in order to make sure that you do it properly, you need to bail those tires in order to reduce the amount of air that's available and, and, and also then put them in a, a trench and cover that bale so that it's not getting water and generating, tires are also a significant, around, are significant generator of various vectors which are not a good thing. So this, this was something that the, the State Land Commissioner requested, and, and we want to, we want to, we want to do that as well.
Thank you for that clarity. I feel very informed. Thank you. Is there any other, I know I already asked this, but any, just provide opportunity for any commissioners to ask further questions. I did have, not for you, Mr. Schroeder, but I wondered if I could ask our Director Tafoya. I know, Dr. Tafoya, that you had, and this, if this is off topic, but I had met with you when I first started in the commission and heard about tire recycling and the needs for Burnley County. Does, how does this proposal, if passed, support or not support the, the needs of our tire problem here in the county and really the state, as I understood from a presentation you gave me a long time ago?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we just proposed, and it was passed by the commission here recently, an amendment to the Scrap Tire Ordinance where local businesses, scrap tire generators, whether they're tire shops or other recyclers or, or other types of business where they're generating a lot of scrap tires, to, to give them some options for dealing with those, those tires. Because, so a scrap tire is a no longer usable tire. And so, under the, the previous version of the Scrap Tire Ordinance, it required these tire shops to, to have a cutter onsite, and then they would have to put these cut tires into a solid waste bin, and they would go into the landfill. And under the revised ordinance, it expanded those options that are, to make it a little more consistent or to be consistent with the State Environment Department regulations, which would allow recycling of those tires. So those tires can be transported out of state, because as the applicant just mentioned, the, there is really not much of a recycling effort in the state of New Mexico. So in regards to how these would, these would come together, I believe if the, if the landfill were to accept tires locally, that would give them an option to, to accept these tires. And when and if they ever become a commodity, they can be recycled versus what the, the ordinance would, originally was, was drafted as, it would just become a solid waste and it was just going to landfill as any other municipal trash. So, you know, it would, it would tie in that way. And I'll stand for other questions if you need some further clarification.
But no, that is helpful to my understanding. Thank you, Director Tafoya. Again, any questions from commissioners? We will move now to public comments. Julianne, can you, I think we will start with the public and maybe take five from the public and then five on Zoom and go like that, if that feels okay?
Did you want to offer any instructions prior to calling the names?
Yes, sorry. I am off of my script, but yes. So the public comment will, everybody will be allowed two minutes for public comment. I will be flexible if needed, but ask for folks to really rally up and make sure that your comments are in line and that you're not repeating too much. And again, two minutes for, per person. I will be flexible when needed, but ask for folks to keep it to two minutes as much as possible.
Okay. And with that, I'm going to call your names on, in threes. When you hear your name, if you can make your way down to the podium, before speaking, if you can state your name for the record. And we will start with the first five of in-person attendees. Angelina Lopez Brody, Elsner Hebert, David Vogel.
Actually, before you start, can I go ahead and swear you in?
Yes.
Do you want to do it in three? Should I have everybody come up at once, the three that you just called? Yes. Okay. If the three of you could come up and, and swear in, that would be great. Okay. For those of you about to speak, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Angelina Lopez Brody. I'm the Commissioner on the Armi Hua Secia in the South Valley and the mother of two elementary age children. I urge the commission to deny the amended Level A Master Plan and the Level B2 Plan. A new economic analysis is needed for all of these plans since the original plan relies on outdated data. The population growth projected 10 years ago is far from today's reality. The population growth projected 10 years ago is far from today's reality. I also urge an approach that is less piecemeal. Low density development, and I appreciate that this is Level B2 and not the larger sprawl, but I still feel that this, the larger piecemeal approach is, is not conducive to our community. Low density development leads to more driving and more congestion. And these curses of sprawl cause the air pollution and traffic, which induces more asthma in children and more obesity and diabetes in adults. These are diseases that I think we can all agree that our county doesn't need anymore of. I'm deeply worried about our community as it faces drought. The Parxiantas on my ditch have gone from weekly irrigations to maybe five every growing season. That's not really enough to sustain our traditional agriculture. That agriculture comes from cultures that are deeply rooted in this state. I also have hope that we can make wise choices together. We have a choice at this crucial time to move away from sprawl that hurts our health and that of the land. The Middle Rio Grande is already over its water budget. We can pull our heads out of the sand and not support any more development by corporations without our community's best interest at heart. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you very much for having a hybrid herring. My name is Elaine Hebert. I live at 1513 Escalante Southwest. I've submitted, I've submitted written comments to flesh out these remarks, but there are a couple of things that I'd like to point out. One, there's been no mention of the changes in governance, which resulted from Mr. Hamm's issues with wall, nor has there been any notice mentioned that ABCWA didn't accept the water plan in Level A. There is no demand for Santalina. The U.S. Census estimates that last year, both the city and the county lost population. In 2020, the projected growth for 2040 was only 7% of what it had been estimated to be back in 2012. The PCC allows the county to review a master plan after 10 years. Why wait? With 7% growth projected from what it was, there's no demand. And most importantly, let me just say some things about water. Today's news that water users of the Colorado River have to cut out 15% of their use from their water budget. The Middle Rio Grande gets water from the Colorado. We're going to be affected by that demand. We also saw the river go dry here for the first time in four decades. Current water demand exceeds the legally available water supply for the Middle Rio Grande. We cannot add more uses and users, which Santalina will. Unlike other growth nodes like Mesa del Sol, which has a development agreement with the ABCWA, there is not one for Santalina. It will be in addition to all those other future uses. All of Santalina will be served by groundwater. That groundwater pumped will add to the depletions. We are approaching the third rail of the compact by not delivering enough water to the southern part. Please do not allow the changes to Level A, Level B. And please do have a new economic development plan. Thank you.
David Vogel. Norm Gom. Diane Reese.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Vogel. I live at 601 Aliso Drive Southeast. You want to swear me in?
Already did.
Already did. I am a professional planner and an economic and community development specialist. I've submitted a paper for your consideration. I don't know if it can be distributed again, but in case not, I have a copy in case people want to send it around. The, the Santalina development is not needed. It can cause environmental damage to our community and it will if it's developed. Population, as Elaine just stated, is declining and there is no need for this kind of urban sprawl, as documented by Mesa del Sol, which is 1% developed after 40% of its urban plan. To do so would be unaccountable, irresponsible, and contrary to the expertise at the County Planning Commission and would second guess that decision on your part. I'm not asking you to reconsider Santalina Plan A, but I am asking you to consider your conscience and your responsibility as a leader in approving and moving forward in such a foolhardy plan. We keep getting bogged down in the details and the weeds of procedure and detail. And I'm reminded of the saying, Mrs. Lincoln, other than that, how did you enjoy the theater? We cannot get to the big water issue, the population issue, if we stayed bogged down in these weeds. That's all the comments I have. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Deputy Clerk, if you wanted to swear in the next speakers. Norm Gom. Diane Reese. Mia Montoya. Hammersley.
Okay. I think we're waiting for the third person there. Okay. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Norm Gom. I'm a retired licensed water engineer. My qualifications for providing these public comments today include the fact that I served as the City of Albuquerque's Water Resources Director, excuse me, manager for seven years. I was Director of the New Mexico Interstate Stream Commission and Engineer Advisor to the New Mexico Commissioner for the Rio Grande Compact Commission. I testified with regard to the Santalina Development's water use and water supply arrangements in 2015. One of the things that I said is that we don't have the water for Santalina and that we would, in a few years hence, be in serious Rio Grande Compact compliance difficulties. History has shown that to be true. May I show this graphic, please? That's part of my written comments.
Yes, you may. I still need to stick with your time, please.
Yes. So this graphic shows the cumulative credits and debits of water deliveries through the Middle Rio Grande that is owed to the water users below Elephant Butte Dam. New Mexicans below Elephant Butte Dam are entitled to 57% of the water that is released from the dam. Back in 2015, when I testified, the compact credit debit balance was effectively zero. And at the end of 2022, the situation had deteriorated, so we were 127,000 acre feet in debt. The Interstate Stream Commission Director earlier this month, excuse me, it was in July, said that, year to date, we're another 40,000 acre feet behind in our deliveries, meaning that we are less than a year on this current trend away from a compact violation. I don't have time to tell you how bad that could be, but it would be really bad for the Middle Valley and it would be really bad for the state of New Mexico. Mr. Stroger said that Santalina would have a gross water use that is at a much lower level than I recall from 2015. But what I really want to do today is to comment about the Level A master plan and the deceit that has been associated with that. The County Planning Commission adopted a blatantly false planning, false finding, finding number 17 in 2014. The County Planning Commission said, "The county has taken water supply availability and cumulative impacts into account in making a land use development decision and determining the legal and physical availability of water for the San, the, sorry, the Santalina master plan." That's blatantly false. There has been no discussion of water supply availability and depth and certainly no determination of cumulative impacts. At that time-
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments because you have exceeded time by a little bit, so if you can finish your comments.
Madam Chair, I, I have some technical comments which pertain, you said that we would have the ability to address the issues and this is a very important issue. I request your indulgence, please.
Yes, if you get to the, the technical pieces that you want to express. Thank you.
The County Position Commission at the time relied on a letter, which is in your packet, dated July 29, 2014, from Water Utility Authority Director Mark Sanchez. Less than a year later, he testified before the Board of County Commissioners. And he said, "The letter, which the Water Authority sent to the County Planning Commission, had been taken, quote, 'a little out of context.'" He said, "We were simply asked a question by staff in the CPC, could the Water Authority serve this development?" And the answer was yes. Subsequently, the Water Utility Authority prepared a serviceability letter at Santalina's request. The serviceability letter involved consultant studies paid for by Albuquerque ratepayers. It concluded that, that the cost of water and wastewater infrastructure for Santalina would be $659 million. And that they would have to meet numerous policies, including doing feasibility studies, something that the county has never required.
Mr., I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up because I don't believe we're talking about the Water Utility Authority or the, and I know it's related, but I believe we've gotten to that on both presentations. So I'm asking you to wrap up this so we can go to the next public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I will wrap up. The Level A amended master plan that is before you, Mr. Stroger said, or actually it was Mr. McGregor, said that it cleaned up a few things. And actually, it muddies a few things. Santalina has chosen to replace the water and sewer master plan drawings of the Level A plan, doubling down on concepts which the Water Utility Authority expressly disapproved. Four years have elapsed. No application has been made to the Water Utility Authority by Santalina. So this is all a house of cards. And now-
Thank you. I'm going to have to wrap it up. Thank you for your public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Julianne, I believe we're going to go to some Zoom participants if you're on the Zoom, please. Julianne will call you in.
Will do, Madam Chair. We did have Ms. Diane Reese next on the public, on the in-person side, and then I'll move to Zoom.
Thank you. Sorry for that.
No worries.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Diane Reese. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a retired Air Force officer and my family and I, after my last assignment here in Kirtland, we chose to live here in New Mexico. We love it here. We're passionate about the life here. And I am also a proud South Valley resident. Resident, hello to Commissioner Casada. Good to see you today. I am also Chair of the Central Group as a Rio Grande chapter of the Sierra Club. We're a nonprofit that represents approximately 10,000 New Mexicans and about half of them are here in the Central Valley, in the central part of the state. This county staff has been working incredibly hard to support Santalina and to do their job, which is to process the plans that have been approved by commissioners. It was noted, they've worked many hours for many years on these plans, on this plan. And I know because I've been attending these meetings since 2015. It's not surprising they're invested in this plan, as certainly is Western Albuquerque Land Holdings. It has been repeatedly stated that the Level A was already approved, implying there could be no changes or denials, but we're here for a vote. So certainly, I do not feel that's true. The staff did clarify proposed amendments and the Level B further defined, and I would say changed the Level A. So I ask, please keep your minds open. Santalina should not be considered a done deal. Remember in 15, the, when the master plan was approved, it was highly controversial. There were many voices who came to say they did not support it. It was a different time and there were a lot of different commissioners. This is complex and it's been confusing today. At times, we've looked around and said, no one really understood why we're having a vote. This was all approved in 15. But we have the planned communities criteria and they make us walk through this. I'd ask you to also look at the CPC, the Planning Commission's findings. They state that these findings are conditions are not in the contrary to, they are contrary to the principles of the Level A plan. And it, the Planning Commission also stated that what is being proposed conflicts with the Santalina Development A plan and the plan criteria, Plan Communities criteria. So they, please, they, they recommend your denial. And finally, water. Any conversation about Santalina is about water. You'll hear many, many voices, our farmers, our experts. We don't have the water. You can never have a conversation about Santalina without discussing the water. And if someone is telling you that you need to do that, they're trying to distract you. So please, open mind, listen to us, and please deny these recommended approval, amendment and the Part B, Level B. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe we called one more in-person before we moved to Zoom.
Good afternoon again, Chair Barbo and members of the commission. Before my time begins, I just wanted to make a procedural distinction because, not the same one, I'm done with that now, but because there are two different agenda items for the amended Level A plan and the Level B2 plan, the Law Center has prepared separate comments on Level A and Level B. I know that the presentation today kind of intertwined the both of them, but I just wanted to make sure that we have your permission for me to proceed with comments on the Level B plan and for my colleague on Zoom, Maslin Locke, to present our comments on the amended Level A plan.
Definitely. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you. Okay. Community representatives maintain that in failing to rely on its own articulated procedures, the board, the board has violated the due process rights of members of the community. There is no procedural pathway for the Level B2 master plan to be considered by the board today because no party appealed the CPC's recommendation to deny the plan. In fact, it is still unclear which procedural rules the board is relying on to conduct today's hearing. As Commissioner Casada aptly noted, the developers have made numerous substantive changes to the Level B2 master plan after it was considered by the CPC. Of greatest concern today is the fact that non-hazardous solid waste, municipal and special wastes was added as a permissive industrial use. In greater detail, this is a significant change that the CPC did not have an opportunity to address and that members of the community did not have an opportunity to comment on. Most of Mr. Stroger's presentation today focused on details of the landfill. That is the first time that the community is hearing any of the details about that particular permissive use. Further, as you all know and as many have noted today, the Rio Grande went dry for the first time in 40 years just a few weeks ago, a heartbreaking foreshadowing of the increased water scarcity to come. The CPC is the administrative body tasked with advising the board on the promotion of health, safety, morals, and the general welfare, express significant concern about the unknown source of water that would supposedly be hauled from another location under the B2 master plan. The PCC require that as part of the Level A master plan, the developer provide documentation of physical and legal water availability. We are now well into the Level B planning process and developers still have not provided this documentation, instead using the Level B planning process to kick the can down the road. Notably, the original Level B2 plan stated that the Bernabeu County Water Utility Authority might provide service to the B2 area, but once it became clear that the service would not be provided, the Level B2 plan was amended to provide for onsite utilities. As it stands, the Level B2 master plan paves the way for developers to utilize onsite utilities- utilities as a tactic to delay securing reliable water and wastewater, water services. For these reasons and for those outlined in our submitted comments, community representatives respectfully request that the Board defer its consideration of the Level B Two Master Plan until the latest drafts have been reviewed by the CPC and a CPC recommendation has been properly appealed pursuant to your procedures. Alternatively, community representatives urge the Board to use your authority to prevent piecemeal development and water insecurity in our community and deny the Level B Two Master Plan. Thank you.
Julianne, please, uh, call the next speakers.
Okay, we're gonna now move, um, to Zoom speakers who have been added to the Zoom meeting. Patricia Wilson, who I believe had to jump off, so she shared her written comments. Maslin Locke, Lisa Christopherson, Kathleen McCord, Marsha Fernandez, and Jorge Garcia. And before you begin your comments, Madam Deputy Clerk, if you can swear them in.
Those of you waiting to speak, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Please, go ahead and, um-
We'll start with Maslin Locke.
Good afternoon, Chair Barboa. I don't know if you can see me, 'cause I can't see myself, so hopefully you all-
I can hear you, Ms. Locke, thank you so much. I, I can't see you, but I can hear you, so please go ahead and proceed. Now you're on mute.
Okay, please forgive me, I know we're all having technical difficulties, sorry, um, Madam Chair, and thank you again, uh, members of the Commission. My name is Maslin Locke, and I'm also a staff attorney with the New Mexico Environmental Law Center. The Law Center represents a coalition of community organizations and individuals, including residents of Albuquerque South Valley, whose water resources are being threatened by the proposed Santalina development. Um, just as an initial comment, county staff clearly stated that it relies on Rule Nineteen of Regular Zoning Meeting Legislative Public Hearings. Sorry, the, the host muted in the middle of that, I don't-
Sorry, I was trying to pin you, go ahead and continue.
Um, I would encourage all the Commissioners to read that rule, which does not actually provide for developers' presentations under the procedural rules. Um, instead, staff seems to be relying on the traditional way these hearings have always been handled, but oddly, these traditions were not followed related to other aspects of this hearing. Um, as my colleague Mia Montoya-Hammersley pointed out, um, and community representatives have pointed out in their written comments, the Board should not be holding this hearing today, because no party to this proceeding appealed the CPC's recommendation to deny the amended plans. But instead of addressing this procedural issue, the county's decided that the rules don't apply anymore. Um, notably, even the developers need to follow these rules in previous Santalina Master Plan approvals, but for whatever reason, that process was not followed in this instance. Um, in failing to rely on its own articulated procedures, the county has violated the due process rights of members of the community, and the county's reliance on select portions of the Burnaleo County zoning code to assert that an appeal of the CPC recommendation was not required conveniently ignores relevant portions of the code that would have also required this Board to simply sustain the denial recommendations of the CPC. Um, additionally, in hearing the Level A amendments, um, as revised in June two thousand and twenty-two, as well as the B Two Plan, the Board is now considering Santalina Master Plans that have not been considered by the CPC, circumventing the CPC's authority as the county body responsible for advising the Board on issues related to health, safety, morals, or the general welfare of Burnaleo County. The county's process in hearing the Level A amendments seems to be misleading at best, as the county has also all but approved the plans despite the denial recommendations of the CPC. The amended plans are already located in the approved plan section of the county website. The plans are listed on today's agenda as motions to approve the amended Level A Plan, and nowhere to be found is any information related to the CPC's recommendation to deny these plans. Um, it's for these reasons and the reasons outlined in our submitted comments, as well as the comments prevent, presented by my colleague earlier today, that community representatives ask that the Board affirm the CPC's recommendation to deny both the Level A amendments and the Level B Two Master Plan. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Locke.
Lisa Christopherson, followed by Kathleen McCord.
Hi, hello, thank you. My name is, uh, Lisa Christopherson. Uh, my family owns a home, and I live, uh, on Ninety-Eighth and Rio Bravo, which is in within miles of the proposed six hundred plus acres of Santalina development. I am currently, uh, stuck in the congested traffic that is now Rio Bravo and Dennis Chavis. I thought I'd live the experience for you all, since I can't send you a video. Uh, an apartment complex has gone up, and additional units are presently being built at Ninety-Eighth and Rio Bravo, and I'm wondering if the increase in the number of people and families that now live, uh, near, uh, this, the proposed Santalina development, has that been, uh, studied? Because to my knowledge, that has not been accounted for since the last economic, uh, analysis. Uh, we have an Amazon warehouse out here now, uh, but I wanna tell you, the AM and the PM traffic, uh, now, I wish I could quantify it, uh, and some data-driven, uh, information that compared from, uh, five years ago to what it is now, bumper to bumper. Uh, it takes me, as I testified at the last, uh, hearing, uh, takes me twenty-five additional minutes that it did not before, and that's just trying to get from Ninety-Eighth, uh, to either I forty or I twenty-five. And so, um, I am curious as to why there is, there is no need for this Santalina development other than the developers trying to recoup monies, but, uh, truly, was there some sort of survey done? I mean, who said that this Santalina development was needed? What is going to be done to address the congestion that all of that? Right now, we have huge trucks, uh, and it's a two-lane road that goes from, uh, Rio Bravo south of Unser, uh, to Ninety-Eighth, that's a two-lane road, there's not a bicycle lane, et cetera. We have heavy equipment, uh, that goes to, to and from the landfill, it's already, uh, congested area. What are you all Commissioners doing? I see nothing in any of these plans that addresses, for those of us who live in this area, how is that going to be addressed? I would urge you, please, to deny, uh, both A and B for those of us who live in this area. I'm not sure if any of these developers live in the area, if they would, they would be sitting in traffic with me right now and know how it feels every morning and PM. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lisa, and Ms. Kathleen McCord.
Next, we have Kathleen McCord, followed by Marsha Fernandez, followed by Jorge Garcia.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Um, to quote an earlier speaker, "Any conversation about Santalina is about water." My name is Kathleen McCord. I represent the community organization known as Valencia Water Watchers, a grassroots group of New Mexico residents who advocate for responsible, sustainable, and equitable use of our most precious, fragile, life-giving resource, our water. New Mexico is the most water-stressed state in the USA. The Rio Grande just dried up in Albuquerque the first time in forty years. Five days ago, KRQE News published an article titled, "In New Mexico, There's Not Enough Water For Everyone." We all need to read that article. There is not enough water right now, and there is certainly not enough water, oops, for massive water-using developments. We must learn from Rio Verde Foothills, Arizona. This community near Scottsdale was built on desert land, just like Western Albuquerque, with no permanent water source. The developers arranged for water to be hauled in from Scottsdale, similar to the WALH Plan for Santalina. The city of Scottsdale has informed the residents of Rio Verde Foothills that starting January first next year, water will no longer be hauled to the community. No more water. Residents have been drilling nine-hundred-foot wells that are dry holes. The same has happened with New River and Desert Hills, Arizona. Residents depended on hauled-in water, and then water hauling was ended. Reality is screaming at us to stop. We almost do our parts to be responsible stewards of our water. It is not an infinite resource. Water rights on paper does not mean that real, wet, life-sustaining water is available. Development decisions must reflect our water realities. We urge you to vote no and deny these Santalina proposals, just as your County Planning Commission has recommended after studying them. We agree with previous speakers that you need to stop the Santalina project before it goes too far. Thank you.
Ms. Marsha Fernandez, and then Jorge Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Marsha Fernandez. I live at twenty-four oh-one Violet Southwest, on a little farm in the South Valley, which, well, no longer sustains cattle, because the pastures are dry, but that's what everybody's been talking about, uncertain water. But it reminded me last night, I was thinking about my mom, and how she always told me when I was a little kid, "Don't say anything if you can't say something nice." So I sat down with a pencil and tried to think of nice things to say, and I came up with a good one. Number one, the Burnaleo County employees who deal with planning and zoning and deal with us, the public, they're great at answering our questions, they field our emails, our texts, our voicemails. The, the counting, planning commission, or count, excuse me, county planning personnel do a great job, and they understand what is at risk here, and they make their comments accordingly. My worry is that, is there anybody listening to the wisdom that comes out of these people who are experts in their field? So that's my number one nice thing to say, my mom is smiling at me somewhere. My number two, well, I don't really have a number two to read to you today, because I can't think of a good thing about elected officials and policymakers right now concerning the Santalina development, um, except the CPC, which surprised me by, uh, asking this to, these two applications to be denied. So instead of, of, a good thing to say about either Santalina and its developers, or the people who, you all who will vote on them, I wanted to echo the words, um, in today's Albuquerque Journal, there is an op-ed by my colleague and friend Patrick Hara Mio, who brilliantly and eloquently wrote that "We invite you, the Commission, to do the right thing and uphold the decision of the CPC and deny both Santalina applications." And while I'm at it, I would like to invite the Santalina developers to do the right thing as well. You know, you've made a good start. The, uh, plan to do, uh, renewable energy, wind and/or solo, solar and battery storage for energy is a great idea, and it's on the right track, but the nineteen-seventy-style urban sprawl development that is actually the Level A Master Plan is, is really not necessary. Urban sprawl is something that we really, smarter people than, than I have told you why it's a bad idea. But you know, this is an opportunity for Wall to do something better. They have started on a, on a good track with recycling, I think it's a good idea, with the energy, those are good ideas, but now that I understand the waste dump, which we, we get the twenty-one hundred pages of this plan and read it as citizens, and know where did it talk about the good things, and Mr. Strozier just read us about taking care of some really needed, uh, waste disposal. We had no concept, we have no idea, nobody's told us, but now that we heard it, that changes things. We are in favor of environmentally responsible things that will help the future, that will see us to a better, brighter future for our children and our grandchildren, and since it doesn't use water, you know, maybe there's a chance that the river won't go dry again, maybe the river will flow, maybe the irrigation-
Ms. Marsha Fernandez, I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap it up.
My hope is that, that, that you, as, as elected officials, will do what you were elected to do, protect the health and safety of those of us who elected you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Julianne, please call the next speakers.
Um, last on Zoom is Jorge Garcia.
Mr. Garcia, you are on mute if you are talking.
Mr. Garcia joined us by telephone, so if you can unmute, if you can hear us.
You can push star six to unmute, Jorge Garcia.
Please.
There you go.
Thank you. You, Chair Barboa, and County Commissioners, my name is Jorge Garcia. I live in twelve-twelve Montrose Place Southwest. I am a member of the Esecia de los Rancho de Atresco Narmijo, and Director of the Center for Social Sustainable Systems, SESOS, long resident of the South Valley. I have decided to express my thoughts and sentiments about this plan development, with the intent to persuade you to uphold the recommendation of the County Planning Commission to deny, will offer requests to ignore the internal process and recommendations to keep moving on their multimillion-dollar project. I understand that there might be a lot of political pressure to support this development moving forward, because I'm sure that the top behind your desk, it might be about the great opportunities that this development represents for the growth of our city. But if this is the case, but is this the case, or is it just a great business adventure that will continue to change the landscape of our city and compromise our water availability? He also give into the wisdom decided of housing development executives, who have been proven beyond reasonable doubt, that will be detrimental to our region, and it will be just a benefit to their business adventure. Just a couple weeks ago, we were all facing the total dangers of the river, and the only reason why we have water in the river is that, that was a discharge. Farmers are not getting any water and have not for months. The wells on the east side are getting contaminated with the oil spills from the military base, and the overuse of groundwater by intense industrial use and other destructive industries will continue to affect availability of water for the, uh, personal consumption. After all these years of arguing against this development, I recognize that some of you are hardcore sold into the idea as a benefit to our area. To my knowledge, no one is shutting down a good business idea for a region. What people are against is the fact that excessive growth, for which there is no water, compromises the future of our children and our grandchildren. Just to satisfy the needs of a small minority of people who extend to benefit from this development. I found that it very hard to try to persuade you to vote against this development from a rational and cautious decision based on the facts and the reality of our region. A lot of you were supported to have the CEO sitting and counting that you will represent our voice, the voice of our community. You might not, or perhaps some of you all that see to the developers that we are fighting, not against anybody. Whatever might be the case, though, a vote against protecting our community in this future will always be there to carry in our consciousness with pride or with shame. Even if you can justify you both support the development community that cares about nothing, except their own multimillion-dollar project and the benefits it will bring to them, not to you, nor your constituents. Thank you very much for allowing me to provide my thoughts, and I, from my heart, because I've seen so many numbers, so many statistics, so many realities being posed to this group that, and sometimes I, you know, I think, what's going on? In what part are we actually failing to see that? We failing our future?
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Julianne, can you call the next speakers?
Yes, so going back to in-person, Susan Sherman, Sally Moon, Patrick Hara Mio. If you please make your way down to the podium to be sworn in.
To our next three, um, commenters, "Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?"
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is Sue Skirman, and I'm speaking today as a resident of Burnaleo County, where I have lived for twenty- of Burnaleo County, where I have lived for 20, over 20 years. And first, I just want to add, as a communications professional, I try to help foster effective communication. And that includes today, in light of numerous communication glitches that have prevented adequate public participation. And you might ask if people have signed up but have not had their name called. Are you due all to adopt the CPC recommendation to deny both plans? I've been following Santalina for about seven years. I'm glad it's never been built, thanks to dogged community opposition. I'm deeply concerned that the developers keep raising this failed concept from the dead. It keeps reemerging in different forms. The original plan would require more water than we have. The latest plans claim to not need any water, or that the water will be hauled. From where? How much water? So many questions remain. It sure sounds like they are just playing a shell game, telling the county what they want to hear. The bottom line is, there's not enough water for current users, let alone a massive new housing development that population trends indicate is not needed or sustainable. Approving these plans, in fact, would be environmental racism, taking water away from low-income people of color in the South Valley, who have irrigated their fields for masequias for generations, and giving it to out-of-state investors. We urge you to do the right thing and reject these piecemeal development plans in light of our current reality, the climate crisis that is here now, and dwindling water that we must all share in an equitable and transparent manner. Thank you.
Madam Commissioner, Commissioners, my name is Sally Moon. I'm a resident and a small business owner in Albuquerque, and I have a small business in Berlin, where I actually have property there also. I actually heard about this two weeks ago, and it was at a meeting or gathering at the river, the Rio Grande, in celebration that we had water two weeks ago. Prior to that, it was empty. It hurt my soul. So I felt compelled to be here, because we see this as numbers and rules, regulations, but we don't see it. Our river is empty. This does not provide water. It might provide some money. Is that worth what we're going through and what we're facing? No, not for me. I just really- Ask you to look deep in your hearts, and is this something that you want for our future? I don't look at just grandchildren and that. I look at seven generations, the native way. We look at seven generations ahead. How is this going to affect our families, our state, our communities, our business? You don't get water out of nothing. I ask you to deny any of this and complete it and just make it nil and null and void. Thank you. On my-
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I had some remarks prepared, bearing witness to this process and how the county staff has bent over backwards to accommodate developers while silencing community and holding us to a different process than them. I have nothing, I have, it's just, I'm rendered speechless. Would you think after eight years, I would be used to spend the others like this? All I can say is, listen, listen, listen to the planning commission. There is no water for this. We can, they'll say, they say, "We're not talking about water," and then all the slides are about how they're reducing their water use. This, as another speaker said, there is no conversation, no conversation about any development without water. Water is life. Water is life for us as individuals, water is life for us as a community, and there is no water, and there will be less. Honestly, I'm speechless. The fact that this is being considered is beyond reason. So all I hope is that the paper shufflers look up from their papers and look outside. What is our future? It's going to blow away. Our future is going to blow away in the wind, and if you approve, you will be culpable. So all I ask you is to deny, honor the recommendation of the planning commission, and deny these amendments. You have my time.
Thank you, Julianne. Please call the next speakers.
Mimi Lopez, followed by Elizabeth Sears, followed by Andion Scheichel. If you please make your way down to the podium, so Madam Clerk can swear you in.
I was waiting for the other two.
Elizabeth Sears, Andion Scheichel. Okay, we'll go on to Lardo Silva and Mimi Lopez.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mimi Lopez. I have lived in Albuquerque for almost 70 years. I am here today to state the obvious, which is that we are facing a critical shortage of our water supply. New Mexico and the entire southwest region of our country are experiencing a drought of historic proportions, the effects of which are being significantly exacerbated by the climate change afflicting our planet. Very recently, the Rio Grande went dry. Climate scientists suggest this will be more than a one-time occurrence. The amount of water in the Colorado River has decreased so alarmingly that the water managers have now announced that permitted uses of Colorado River water will expect to have a substantially reduced allotment in the coming year. New Mexico is a Colorado River water user. Unfortunately, we currently have no means of increasing our water supply. The only thing we can control is our rate of consumption. We need to be laser-focused on water conservation practices, both those already known and innovative practices, some of which we might rediscover under guidance from our indigenous tribal communities who have long histories of survival in New Mexico. Under the current extreme drought conditions, I contend that it is the epitome of foolishness and irresponsibility to do anything to aid and abet a massive, unneeded new development. I urge you to uphold the County Planning Commission's recommendations to deny both the requests regarding the Level A and Level B plans that are the subject of today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Madam Chair, that concludes public comment.
Okay, and I did want to ask if there's somebody that signed up for public comment and for some reason wasn't called by the opportunity. Okay, thank you. Now move back to commission for any questions, comments, or a motion.
Madam Chair, if I might just make a staff comment.
Yes, Mr. Nick Cam.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nicholas Hamm, Burnaleo County Zoning Administrator. There's been many comments this evening about procedure and whether or not the county is following its adopted procedure, and so I wanted to speak to that, to make sure that we have information on the record with regard to what the code says, and information on the record with regard to what your rules of procedure say. I'm going to start with the county zoning code. Section 19.5 PC Plan Community Zone, Section B Procedure. Number one, adoption amendment of Rank II Level A plans is by the Board of County Commissioners. B2, adoption and amendment of Rank III Level B plans is by the Board of County Commissioners. Moving on to Section 25, which speaks to amendments, amendments of adopted land use documents. Section 25A says that any proposed amendment, supplement, or change shall first be submitted to the Burnaleo County Planning Commission for its recommendation and report, which that process has occurred. Section 25E, which deals with appeals, says appeals shall only be taken for actions where the County Planning Commission has been delegated final decision-making authority, except for zone map changes. And stipulated in Section 19.5, you are the final decision-making authority with regard to these types of planning documents, both a Level A amendment and adoption of a Level B plan. Moving on now to your rules of procedure. Section 1, applicability of the rules, states that quasi-judicial proceedings do not include legislative actions, adopting, amending, or revising comprehensive community or neighborhood plans, zoning regulations, other land use planning documents, or the adoption of area-wide maintenance maps or amendments. Legislative acts relating to land use matters may be heard at a regular administrative meeting, or if necessary, a regular zoning meeting. So we are at a regular zoning meeting, you are considering items that you have final decision-making authority through the public hearing process. Now moving on to Section 19, which has been cited by some of the folks at the Environmental Law Center, public hearings procedures. The first statement in that section says that these procedures to be followed for public hearings on legislative matters are generally as follows. Now, in my job as interpreting code, generally, to me, when speaking about the Board of County Commissioners, means that you and your wisdom and your authority have the ability to amend those as you see fit. It would strike me as a little bit foolish, if I can't think of a better word at the time, to move to make a decision on something when you haven't heard from the folks that are actually making an application. You also have discretion to ask questions of the public. These folks in some way are members of the public. It would appear to me that you have the ability to seek input from the folks that are submitting the application, and I find nothing in the adopted rules in the county zoning code that suggests that you all, you all or county staff has violated any procedure that's adopted governing these specific processes. With that, Madam Chair and Commissioners, will stand for any questions.
Thank you so much for that clarity, Mr. Nick Ham.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Well, Mr. Ham is here. This isn't about procedure, but the last, when the CPC heard this request, there was another request, correct, at that same time by the land agents? Could you talk a little bit about that and what's happened since then?
Madam Chair, Commissioner O'Malley, to my knowledge, there was, there may have been a request for zone change.
There was a request for an interim use.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the commission, so a little bit of context, in previous actions, or I guess in through this process, there was interest expressed by this particular applicant to pursue a special use permit. There is language in both the Level A plan and the adopted development agreement that speaks to interim uses. There was a disagreement between what county's position was on that and what the developer or the applicant's position was on that. So part of my duties are to interpret zoning language, that's in the code or in related documents, and I did just that. I interpreted interim use to mean uses that are, and I'm going to paraphrase here, limited to 36 months and don't make permanent changes to the land. That decision was sent to these folks, provided for an appeals process that goes to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment affirmed by interpretation of that. That decision was then appealed to you all as the Board of County Commissioners, and you all, again, affirmed that decision. I'm going to defer to the folks at County Legal to describe the process beyond that, but in the county process, my interpretation was upheld through both bodies, through both appellate bodies in the county process.
I just wanted to make that statement, because there were, there were some other things that were going on, and my understanding is, this commission held firm on our procedures, right? And so it was appealed by the representatives of the, or the agents for the property, and then it went, they appealed it, went to court, and that they lost. So I just want to say that because I think that we're really paying attention, you know, as a commission, right, to our procedures, to our ordinances, and how we move forward. And it's not that we're, you know, we're not dismissive, right, that we know what our responsibilities are concerning land use and all the legal, you know, concerns associated with it. So I wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. So the public hearing is now closed. Do any commissioners wish to make a motion on the item and second, in order to open it for discussion and a vote?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Benson and Commissioner Kessada. Any discussion, further discussion from commission?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Benson.
Yeah, there's a couple things I want to highlight before we take a vote. And thank you all for the public comment here. It's appreciated, and I wish we had more zoning meetings where more people came. Oh, I apologize. I am making a motion to approve, do we have to vote on each item? All right, then-
Yes, that's correct.
And do we have to get a number?
Mr. Vice Chair, per the script for Madam Chair, she's requesting if there's a motion or a second to start the discussion, and then if it's going to move for a vote, then she will prompt the clerk to issue a resolution number, and then a second motion for B.
Okay.
So you, now that there's a motion and a second on the table, then you can start your discussion.
Thank you so much, Julianne. So also, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Excuse me, Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson, just very quickly would like to state that if you proceed with a decision, that we do have findings and conditions for approval for each case, and also findings for denial for each case, if you'd like to see those. But normally, those do go along with the decision.
Are they automatic, or do we have to approve those?
Ms. Burke, can you please explain that further? I didn't understand what you're referring to.
Madam Chair, just to state that the commission should be aware of the findings and conditions that they are approving, along with just the decision. And we are, we've been reminded too, that the Planning Commission did recommend denial, so we do have those findings for denial, if the BCC wishes to go in that direction. We also, in the staff reports that was provided in March for the Planning Commission, there were findings for approval and conditions of approval. there were findings for approval and conditions of approval for each of the cases that, that govern the case, that give the rationale for the decision. And then also the conditions about particular requirements that need to be met as a result of, of the decision. For instance, that there need to be subsequent level, you know, level C plans that, that the elements of the level B plan must be complied with. So all of those are, those are examples of some conditions of approval that, that could apply if you decide to approve these requests. So we do have copies of findings and conditions or findings for denial. If you'd like to see them, we could pass them out and I'm not sure how we can make these available to the folks online.
I'm sorry that I still am not completely understanding, maybe some clarity, I'm not sure if Enrico or others, but if, if this is part of what we should be considering, then was, is there a reason why it was not included in the presentation? Is that what I'm understanding, that you're saying there are more findings that we should consider before a vote? Is that what I'm understanding, you the same, Ms. Burke?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so just to say that these, these findings and, and conditions for approval and findings for denial, were basically part of the process for the Planning Commission. And we've extracted them and we're giving them to you that, that you can decide. If you, if you decide today about how to proceed, that these, these findings and conditions may, may go along with what, what you decide today. I did try to send these over earlier today that you could take a look at them. I can also display them here if you'd like to see what we've passed out, if that would be helpful.
I'm going to make sure we're following process. We do have, Julianne, I don't, there is a motion on the floor and I'm not sure that we can take further, like some advice, please.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go ahead and defer to Enrico.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. So basically, I think what Mrs. Verac is explaining is that if the commission moves to support the recommendation of staff for approval or support the recommendation for denial of the CPC, we do have findings of fact and conditions of approval that outline what was discussed in today's hearing. The conditions and findings are very typical of the zoning cases, planning cases, and so on. So those are available. If we have a motion and there is a move to approval, we have those that we can read into the record that specifically outline the conditions under which staff supported this request. So staff recommended approval of this request with specific conditions in mind to allow for, as you had mentioned earlier, the safe and consistent implementation of this plan according to all of the county staff's comments. So if we move in that direction, we can review those and make sure that they're adopted into the record to assure that this master plan is following all of the county rules and regulations consistent with its review and comment from agencies. If this request is denied, we also have findings that would support the denial of the Planning Commission. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that this is very typical of this process. And these, we would wait for any direction from the commission and then we can work on reading those into the record as the commission would like.
Thank you for that clarity and to what I believe was Commissioner Benson's question. Whichever way we vote, those, do those come automatically?
That is correct.
Thank you. So I believe there's a motion on the floor. I'm not sure that it's clear whether the motion is for which of the two proposals.
The first item. Madam Chair.
Okay, and there's a, a second. Any further discussion?
I would like to make some comments.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Benson. Vice Chair.
So one of the items that was presented for the reason to, that we should be swayed to deny the approval is the, the population loss that we've had. And that hurts me as much as watching the Rio Grande shrink. And, and don't get me wrong, Ms. Moon, your testimony was heartfelt and it, and it definitely moved me, and I agree. It's heartbreaking to see the Rio Grande dry out, but it's also heartbreaking to see our families move away. And, and I, I actually lived in Berlin when I was a kid. And my friends, the Padillas, Avicilio Bull Padilla, all those children have moved out of state. Actually, one is down living in Los Cruces. The other three are out of state. Tabitha's moved up to Albuquerque. John Sharkey, he was a police officer in Albuquerque. His two daughters have moved out of state. That's just Berlin. My family from Tucumcari and Santa Rosa. All of my surviving family from Santa Rosa have moved out of state. That's population shrinkage. They got great water. Most of my family in Tucumcari have moved out of state. Most of my friends and family here in Albuquerque have moved out of state because we don't have development. And it's not the development that's draining our water resources. And when, when we've got an example of a developer who's trying to find smart ways to do it, using two percent of the water. If we all did that, if everybody in this room, if every citizen, and you should, please, go to the Water Authority. I'm sure a lot of you do go to the Water Authority meetings. They track water usage for businesses, for developments, for residents. And we're doing better and we're using less and less water. And that's what we need to do. We need to be smart because water is our most precious resource. And so when we see examples of this, of, of smart ways to use water, we need more of it, right? And they track who's using the most water. And if we all moved, then the water would return. Is that what we want? Get rid of all the farmers, get rid of all the residents. We could have that. We could have that. So what we have here is we've got a plan that's already been approved. Now we're trying to define it. And I see no reason why this conflicts with any of the plans. And in fact, it's, it's a smart way to make use of the land. And I was also, I also heard, listen to your constituents. My gosh, that's, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm here. It's because I have been listening to our constituents. And the multiple constituents that continue to move away. That's why I'm here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Kessada. Thank you, Vice Chair Benson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, a couple of the speakers made some valid points about here. I do live up here. I do live up on Ninety-Eighth and Tower. This is my area. It is important to the residents up here. She was talking about the traffic, right? All those houses are already here. And the only way to have any kind of proper development and proper, which I call economic justice, the only way to, to solve those traffic problems is to have jobs over here. To have, you know, to have a plan in place that says you have to have jobs first before you can develop anymore. That is what the Santalina Master Plan does. It is an equation. It says jobs first before you can build anything else, right? You have to put in opportunities for jobs before you can move forward. And that is the only way we are going to fix the traffic problem. We will never build another bridge. You know, we have to look at what equity is. The one thing I do find offensive is to be calling where I live sprawl. I live on Nine Mile Hill. We're nine miles from First and Central. And there is no city in the United States that considers nine, ten, eleven, twelve miles from the center of their city sprawl. The problem that we have is we just live on the wrong side of the river. And so because of that, because of this looking really thoroughly at water, right? That makes a difference to us, I think, because we do have concerns about water. And we have to look at who conserves water. And again, I will say this and then I'll move on. It is not just my area of town that is responsible for the water in Burnaleo County. It is every part of Burnaleo County that is responsible for our greatest natural resource. Okay, I'll end with this. But yet, nobody made a peep about right across the freeway, the big huge Amazon plant that's already expanding twofold. And I don't know if they've been up there and looked at it, but it's pretty massive. And I don't know if they did any research, but they're using potable water. They're using Albuquerque, Burnaleo County water, but yet, not a peep, not a protest, not a nothing when it comes to that side of the freeway. And that is what we see in my district, and that's what makes us disheartened. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Kessada.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you. As many of you know, and this is on the record, I did not support the master plan for Santalina. And there was a number of reasons for it, the first being that I thought it was way too big. It was very ambitious. It's the size of a town. It's for ninety thousand people. And, and, you know, I just, I mean, that was pretty much overwhelming. And, and of course, my issue was who's going to pay for all the infrastructure? And the way it was set up, I thought, was that we weren't going to, but then it turns out that there's a lot of tax increment districts out there. So it was like, well, I guess we are. So I was concerned about that. And then I did not support the zoning that was attached to the plan because, for the same reasons, right? I felt that something like that, I would have preferred that it would be, if you're going to promote, promote something, it should, it should be a little more phased. And then again, it was because the tax increment districts that were approved for that site. I, I just want to say, you know, I'm, I'm an irrigator. I live in the North Valley. You know, I was very distressed about the water, the river drying up. I think that was, you know, obviously for obvious reasons, right? Because the river kept, helps keep the valley, both valleys, you know, alive and, and healthy. And of course, it gives water to the smaller farmers and the bigger farmers too. And it keeps the asequias and running and the trees and everything like that. So I understand the whole water issue. What I think is, and then I just want to address the issue about, someone said, I can't believe you've been talking about this. And I'm like, yeah, well, that's what we do. You know, people have property and they have property rights and they come before us and they, and they ask for, you know, our, you know, they, that's the process. You know, you've got to get planned through and you ask for zoning or whatever. I've been in development. It's been redevelopment, but it's still, you know, it's still development. And we have to go through the same process as a city. And so that's our job. Our job is to look at, at plans and to look at things like uses and proposed uses and things like that. I think what, you know, what's I think is, is beneficial to this particular request is that it is, it's for, what I'm excited about is it's for, it could be possible, I mean, it's for solar, the solar development, and that's something we need. It is low water use, which is opposed to, you know, having water use that's intensive, which is something we don't want. All the conditions associated with this, you know, you can't build, you can't drill a well. You can't get water from Water Authority. So that means you got, I mean, Water Authority is not going to extend water to that area. And you have to bring it on, onboard, and it's not as much because we're talking about low water uses. I think that's preferable to, quite frankly, having, you know, big water use. Now, why is this happening? Well, I think quite part of it's happening, and I think most people know this, is because this is a huge plan and in order for that, this property owner to get water to such a huge plan, they have to have a deal with the Water Authority. Water Authority has basically said, well, you're going to have you to have your own system. You're going to have to have an entire system for this project. And that's a lot of infrastructure. And I think the last cost was like seventy million dollars to put all the water infrastructure in there. That required reclaimed water mostly, and it had to have its own wastewater system. It could be attached to the city of Albuquerque's and Burnaleo County's wastewater system. That's a big price tag, but they didn't deny it. They weren't going to deny water. They were going to say, this is what you have to do if you want water, okay? That's a big cost. There's a road, I guess, that exists to this project. I think the, the important thing for me is how is this all going to work out in the end, right? That comes through a site plan. You know, what's the site plan going to look like? And that's the next process, right? I am hoping that, and I don't know if I'll be on the commission when a site plan comes through, but I'm hoping that, that will be looked at very carefully because it's, there's a jail right here. And so there's a landfill not too far, a proposed landfill possibly. And then, of course, there's a possibility of a solar field, which, you know, I mean, the jail, you can see some photographs, satellite photographs. There's a big array that actually provides electricity to the jail. So that's a possibility of, of generating more renewable energy, which is, I think, is a good thing. So I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm saying this because I'm just about, I'm concerned about water just as everybody else. But do we, when do we, do we shut off the tap? We're doing a lot of redevelopment in the North Valley. There's a project that's going near me, sixty homes. There's another project that's going, Dos Franchas, two hundred homes. Those are, you know, everybody's conserving, but that's, that's adding to the water use. It just happens to be in the interior, right? I do not support sprawl. I see sprawl as, you know, that we're, you know, basically sending infrastructure out there, right? And that's a cost to everybody. And it hurts, I think, efforts to maintain other older infrastructure. And especially those, that money goes out to developers and, and, you know, we pay for all that infrastructure. That concerns me. I like compact development and I like, you know, development that is contiguous as you go out, right? I think that makes sense from a planning perspective and also from an infrastructure perspective. That's what I support. Where there's infrastructure, that's where we should, we should build. And of course, I support very, you know, good development and high quality development. I mean, Sawmill Project is a very good example of that. And as many of you know, I was very involved in developing that project. So I think this is, you know, preferable to, I think, what was, what, you know, what was originally planned, which is the ability to do a light industrial, which would require a lot of water. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. I believe we're ready for a vote. I do want to make one comment because I feel, well, when I want to say, yeah, I'm, I am actually taking me way back. Right, I'm an heir to the Triscoll Landground, which was sold, that, this water under the bridge, right? But just to say that my family, for multiple generations, has come and fought for our water. My family property still is right there off of Pajarito, where my grandfather, I'm only here because of access to the asequia and the waters that my father, my grandfather cultivated for our family, sorry. So I want folks to understand that, yeah, I'm an, I consider myself an environmental justice advocate. I believe water is sacred and is life, as many have said tonight. This plan was passed and as people have said, you know, the cost, when, when those plans were passed and the studies were done, over sixty-five million, I believe, one of the comments were to actually provide the infrastructure needed to put, to fulfill the master plan of Santalina and the planned communities of, like Commissioner Kessada mentions, of rooftops to jobs, to schools, to parks, right? So that, as I've been told, is years and years, decades ahead. Because I don't know that any commission or anyone anytime soon is going to provide over sixty-five million, or Commissioner O'Malley said seventy million, to provide that infrastructure. over $65 million, or Commissioner O'Malley said $70 million, to provide that infrastructure. So we are, the plan was passed, as others have said, through people, through robust community involvement. And I feel like people are somewhat misinformed about the water uses. I think I can say that I support this because this is about recycling. Recycling tires, which I only learned since being on the commissioner, that we currently transport, which is also an environmental problem to our communities, transport tires out of state to facilities and/or they just get buried in our landfill and then become an even bigger problem because they're taking up space, the deterioration of them. So I was only alerted in the last year and a half about the tire problem we have. So while this isn't likely going to solve it, it can provide some relief. Would I also, I feel like I can support this because it doesn't use our water. It's not tapped into our water, right? But it is even asking for less use of potable water that will be transported out there only to be used for employees and some things, right? Not masses amount of water. In fact, 2% of what was previously approved in a planned communities, which again takes in consideration how rooftops to parks, to schools, to docks. I do have concerns that, and I wish that the applicant would have done more about informing advocates and community about what this vote was about so that they could also be prepared and not misinformed. But I still believe, and I just want to follow, right? I've been on both sides of this now. And I believe, like process, I've heard folks talk about process and procedures or getting tuned to the weeds. We have to, right? I have to stand and believe that these processes and procedures are put in place. And I want to say that our ancestors, my ancestors, are not new to process and procedure. We have followed rule and law of the land for a long time. And so being integral to those process and procedures is what keeps us accountable and which keeps our process, our democracy engaged. So I just wanted to be clear about those things. I believe Bernalillo County staff, in the last year and a half, I see nothing more, but them also, most of the staff in Bernalillo County, as I've learned over the last year, are from here, born and raised, like me, multiple generations, many of them. And they are concerned about water too. So I believe everybody has done their due diligence. And again, just to repeat, and because I also believe in information, right? That this presentation, and I'm sorry if folks didn't feel informed coming into this meeting, but we are pretty clear that this ask now, from many years of Santalina's requests getting denied because it wasn't following process and procedure or because maybe it did use too much water or whatever the reasons for before, that this part, this section, and this issue is going to continue to come to folks 30 years ahead. There's not a null and void, right? This is going to keep coming to us. And when folks talk about piecemeal, this is the option, right? Where we're saying this huge, over 13,000 acres now are taking this small section, 680, 608, I forget the total number, right? Of this portion of this huge ocean of land minus the water. And they're trying to make something with it that they can. And I believe it to be within the permissible use and what commissioners before me have laid out and which community has been a part of throughout the process. So I just wanted to share those comments. I'm available for further discussion after this vote and the subsequent vote. And I thank everybody for coming out, providing public comment. I hear your passion. I am committed to our environment and particularly to our water and hope that we can have some conversations. So, Madam Clerk, if there's not any further discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, if we can request the clerk provide the resolution number first, please?
Sure. For item 4A, we have AR 2022-90.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, if you can proceed with issuing 4B as well?
Or item 4B, AR 2022-91.
Go ahead and please call the roll for 4A.
Madam Chair.
Oh, prior, my apologies. Findings and conditions?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we have two items. We have an item A and an item B. Item A is the amendment to the Level A Plan. Item B is the actual Level B Plan itself. I think Ms. Varek can read those findings and conditions into the record before the vote just to ensure that they make it on the record. And again, these findings and conditions work to consolidate all of the rules, regulations, and requirements of all the various county codes to ensure that there is guidance and clarity with regards to the operation of the master plan moving forward. So with that, I'll defer to Ms. Varek.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, so the first item that you would be voting on is SPR 2022-0006. And Ms. Baca, could we have the overhead that I can display these for everybody? And then, if you'd like, Madam Chair, I can also read these into the record in case. And I apologize, it is a little bit lengthy. And I would preface this by saying that these are, for the most part, the findings and conditions that appeared in the staff reports that were presented to the county planning commissions. And there have not been substantial modifications to these since this went to the planning commission.
Just for clarification, for the record, can you repeat that SPR number in full?
SP, Madam Chair and Commissioner Benson, that is SPR 2022-0006. This is item 4A on the agenda.
I believe it's, on my record, is SPR 2021-0006.
Oh, I apologize. That is correct. It should be 2021-006. That's correct. These applications were first submitted in 2021. Thank you. So may I proceed, Madam Chair? And did you want to display these, Julie?
You asked for the document camera, it's on.
I have it on the...
Okay, so the laptop.
On the screen. Okay, there we go. Okay. So SPR 2022-0006. Sorry, 2021-0006. Request for approval of the request to amend the Santalina Level A Master Plan. So finding one, this request is for amendments to the Santalina Level A Master Plan. The proposed amendments seek to provide consistency between the adopted Santalina Level A Master Plan and the proposed Santalina Level B2 Plan, particularly in the areas of phasing, water and wastewater, and open space. The plan area currently legally described as the Santalina Level A plat and lots 1 and 2, Santalina Unit 2, generally bounded by Interstate 40 to the north, 118th Street, and the escarpment open space to the east, the Pajarito Mesa on the south, and the escarpment area adjacent to the Rio Puerto Valley on the west in projected sections. And this is the legal...
May I expand to, so that others can look at it from the audience?
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And, Madam Chair, should I read the detail? Enrico, read all the details of the legal description. It's sections within Township 9 North Range 1 East and sections within Township 9 North Range 2 East and sections in Township 10 North Range 1 and sections within Township 9 Range 2 East. And this is within, sections within the New Mexico Prime Meridian Grid System. Town of Trisco Grant in Albuquerque, New Mexico, Zone PC Level A and containing approximately 13,700 acres. So that's basically the legal description. Finding two, as the Santalina Level A Master Plan was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on June 16, 2015, with 24 findings and 22 conditions as identified in the notice of decision dated June 19, 2015, under SPR 20130004. These findings and conditions continue to apply. The Board of County Commissioners amended conditions of approval, 8, 9, and 11 of the Santalina Level A Master Plan approval that pertain to the provision of water service to the Santalina Development by the Albuquerque-Bernalillo County Water Utility Authority regarding timing of the requirement of a fully executed development agreement between the applicant and the ABCWUA. These conditions do not apply to the Level B2 Plan. The provisions for onsite water and wastewater systems as described within this Level A Plan only apply to the 630-acre tract within the Level B2 Plan that is under consideration as SPR 2021-0004. An additional condition, number one, has been added to the Level A conditions to apply exclusively to the Level B2 Plan. The proposed amendments to accommodate the Level B2 Plan are consistent with the principles of the Santalina Level A Plan and the overall intent and vision of the Santalina Level A Plan that calls for an integrated mixed-use development that provides for adequate jobs and housing in the subject property that is in a designated industrial area and will provide for jobs on the site. Number six, the provisions for onsite water and wastewater systems as described within this Level A Plan are limited to the Level B2 area and will not negatively impact provisions for water and wastewater within Santalina as described in the Santalina Level A Plan. These amendments and the, number seven, these amendments and the associated allowable uses as anticipated in the Level A Plan are particularly appropriate given the uniqueness of the subject property on the southwestern edge of Santalina and the proposed uses demonstrably will not require ABCWUA sewer and water service. Okay, on to conditions. Number one, the 630-acre site described as a Santalina Level B2 Plan area will develop only under onsite water and wastewater utilities as described in the amended Level A Plan, Chapter 5 Utilities, and in the Level B Plan, Chapter 6 Utility Infrastructure. Number two, the Santalina Level A Development Agreement shall be modified as necessary to ensure consistency with the Level B2 Plan in such areas as land use, transportation, and open space. Additional modifications to the Level A amended plan are as follows. Ensure throughout the text in the Level A Plan that onsite water and wastewater systems are limited to the B2 Plan area. And B, provide clarifications to ensure that water consumption for the onsite system will be substantially less than other uses listed under the Zone Industrial Business Park. And finally, number four, additional typographical errors and grammatical changes agreed to by Bernalillo County may be made prior to completion of the Level A amended plan following the approval of the Board of County Commissioners. Okay. Madam Chair, Commissioners, so those are for your adoption.
Thank you, Ms. Varek. And I believe we're now ready for Madam Clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vice Chair Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Chair Barboa?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, you have a due pass. And now I believe the commission is, can accept a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move for approval of item B.
Thank you, Commissioner Casada. Do we have a second?
Second.
I believe that was Commissioner Benson. Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, just quickly, if we can, for the record, excuse Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. I meant to do that. I meant to say that at the beginning of this. Thank you very much, Julianne. We, Commissioner Piscotti is excused for the vote today. She did inform us beforehand, and it was my mistake to not mention at the top of the meeting, Commissioner Piscotti has been excused from today's meeting. Yes, Ms. Varek, maybe you're going to read the findings.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I can read them. This is item 4B, SPR 2021-0004. And Julie, if you want to display these so folks can follow along, and at least we don't have a big, long legal description to start with. Finding one, this is a request for approval of the Santalina B2 Plan on proposed tract 3A1B, Santalina Level A plat, located on the east side of Shelley Road, southwest, approximately three miles south of I-40, Zone Santalina PC Level A and containing approximately 630 acres. Number two, the Santalina B2 Plan is consistent with the Santalina Level A Plan in that it proposes development within the industrial and business park area within the southwestern portion of Santalina to include industrial uses that require limited water and wastewater to be served onsite, by onsite utilities as provided only by the B2, only for the B2 Plan in the amended Level A Plan. Number three, the Santalina B2 Plan does not request service from the ABCWUA. A development agreement with the ABCWUA would only be required if service is being requested from ABCWUA. Number four, Santalina B2 Plan includes specific provisions for zoning with land uses, including power generation, that's solar and wind, battery storage, recycling facilities, refuse, waste disposal, and utility and drainage facilities. It also includes standards for design, such as landscaping and parking, in accordance with the types of land uses that will be followed. Santalina B2 Plan also includes provisions for connections to the Santalina Transportation Network, open space, trails, drainage, and government and public services within the B2 Plan area. The Santalina Level A Master Plan, together with planned community zoning, was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on June 16, 2015 for the entire 13,851-acre property with 24 findings and 22 conditions of approval. The Level A Development Agreement between Bernalillo County and Western Albuquerque Land Holdings was approved on June 24, 2015. Modifications to Level A conditions of approval, 8, 9, 11, related to ABCWUA supplied services... related to ABCWUA supplied services were adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on August 15, 2017. Amendments to the Level A Plan that are needed for consistency between the Level A Plan and the B2 Plan requests related to onsite water and wastewater, transportation network, and open space and phasing have concurrently been considered and approved. Technical reports that were approved for the Level A Plan, including the revised Level A Transportation Plan, continue to apply to the Santalina B2 Plan. Number nine, the Santalina B2 Plan is consistent with the Santalina Level A Plan that designates the site's area as industrial in accordance with the Santalina Level A Plan. The Santalina B2 Plan is consistent with the plan's communities criteria and the Albuquerque-Burnile County Reserve Area that call for substantial self-sufficiency and economic sensitivity and development that is at no cost to Burnile County. Approval of the provision for onsite water and wastewater systems, utilities within the Level B2 Plan is specific to the Level B2 Plan area and does not imply approval of such a system in other areas in Santalina, which shall be subject to provisions for water and wastewater systems as described in the Santalina Level A Master Plan and the conditions of approval. And finally, finding 12, the Board of County Commissioners has approved under the case SPR 2021-0006, amendments to the Santalina Level A Master Plan in such areas as phasing, open space, and transportation, and creates the possibility for onsite water and wastewater solely within the B2 Plan, which are... Which all are needed for the approval of the B2 Plan. Okay, and then we have nine conditions. Continue with the conditions, Madam Chair. Number one, development of the Santalina B2 Plan shall conform to the areas and exhibits in the plan document, most specifically pertaining to the following areas: land uses, zoning, open space, and trails, transportation, and utility infrastructure. Number two, the B2 Plan will be limited to the industrial uses listed in the zoning chapter that require limited water and wastewater to be served by onsite utilities as provided for in the amended Level A Plan and as specified in Chapter 5 Utility Infrastructure. No private wells or privately-owned public water supply wells will be constructed or utilized within the B2 Plan area. Upon development of the B2 area, mitigation specified in the completed Class Archaeological Survey to... For this 350 acres of the site will need to be addressed. An additional Class 3, and I believe that would be a survey for the remaining 280 acres of the B2 area will be required prior to submittal of a Level C plan and development of that area. Okay, Santalina Development Agreement will be... B2 Development Agreement will be required in accordance with the Santalina Level A Development Agreement. The Level B2 Plan approval shall not be implemented until the Level B Development Agreement with Burnile County and the developer is finalized and fully executed. In the event that the Level B2 Development Agreement has not been fully executed by the four-year plan review date, the plan shall be subject to review for validity in accordance with the Level B Plan Communities Criteria. No Level C applications shall be submitted until the county development agreement is fully executed. If there is no county development agreement after the prescribed time, the matter shall require review of the plan document through the county planning commission process, subject to most current county regulations. Okay, we're getting there. Number five, Santalina Level B Development shall comply with all applicable Burnile County ordinances and standards as more specifically provided in the Level A Development Agreement. The Level B Development Agreement shall be consistent with the Level A Development Agreement. Modifications to the Level A Development Agreement will be required for adjustments to land use calculation, open space, transportation, and transportation to be determined at the time of drafting and approval of the Level B Development Agreement. Number six, prior to additional approvals for the Level B2 Plan area, including Level C plans, plating of the subject property will be required. Number seven, prior to Level C approvals for the B2 Plan area, any required approvals from federal, state, and local agencies shall be submitted to Burnile County Departments. Number eight, additional modifications to the Level B2 Plan that must be made in the Level B2 Plan, and that's prior to publication, are as follows. Add language to indicate that any type of hazardous waste will not be allowed within the Level B2 Plan area. If a solid waste management facility is proposed within the Level B2 Plan area, the following special waste categories, as regulated by the New Mexico Environment Department, shall be allowed: sludge, asbestos, and industrial solid waste. Tire disposal will also be allowed in accordance with NMED regulations. B, provide clarifications to ensure that water consumption for the onsite system will be substantially less than other uses listed under the Zone Industrial Business Park. C, and again, ensure throughout the text in the B2 Plan that onsite water and wastewater systems are limited to the B2 Plan area. And finally, number nine, additional corrections to the plan, such as grammatical and typographical corrections agreed to by the county staff, may be incorporated in the revised plan prior to publication.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you. And Dan?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, in reviewing that list as we were going through on, I believe it's item 8A... I'm sorry. Yeah, very good. Thank you. On item 8A, the items listed were sludge, asbestos, industrial solid waste. And then we had a second statement for tire disposal will be allowed in accordance with NMED regulations. We also add... Need to add one other sentence for ASR, or it should read automotive shredder residue, thank you, will also be allowed. It's just to clarify what is and isn't going in, because ASR technically isn't an industrial solid waste.
That's the acronym that they use in the regulations.
So in the NMED regulations, thank you, I believe it's solid waste not otherwise specified. So if we could craft that last statement, ASR and other solid waste not otherwise specified will also be allowed.
Madam Chair. This is Lucas, and this is...
Yes.
This was presented in the graphic that the applicant had presented. It was just... Just wanted to make sure it was... Everything was listed properly so we're clear what is going into that landfill. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity. Now, I believe we have a motion and a second. There's not any further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Benson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Chair Barboa?
So, Madam Chairs, internet keeps going in and out. So we can wait?
We'll wait.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm going to go ahead and defer to you on whether you want to continue the vote without Madam Chair and then close the meeting from there.
I just had a respect for Madam Chair. Let's wait another minute, see if she can get connected. And if not, the three votes, the motion passes, so we'll close from there. Let's give her another minute. Julianne, is she back on?
She is not, no.
Okay. I'm going to assume that she's having technical difficulties. So with that, the vote passes. And before I announce the next meeting, is there anything else you need to cover? Julianne?
Mr. Chair, just announcing the next zoning meeting and adjournment. Thank you.
Okay, the next zoning meeting will be Tuesday, September 13, 2022, at 3:00 PM in the Kansas City District Commission Chambers. If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.